This meeting is now called to order. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation?
Would you like the honor, sir?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for this beautiful city. We thank you for the people who have chosen to help lead and direct this city. And above all, Father, we thank you for the provision that you have made for our city and what you're doing and what you're hoping to do in the very near future. Dear Father, please let the Holy Spirit take control. Let the wisdom of an Almighty God prevail in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lucinovich.
Here.
Paris.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stumpf.
Here.
Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
I made that motion.
First by Stumpf, second by Lucinovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, before we get started with the workshop, two things. One, our livestream system is down. Because of the equipment here at City Hall, it's broken. So what we're going to do is, this is going to be recorded, and then it's going to be put on the California City YouTube-
City of California City YouTube channel, right after the meeting.
So, we're covered there.
Is anybody doing it on Facebook?
I have no idea.
I'll try and stream it on Facebook.
The other thing is, we ask that everybody hold your questions until the end, so write them down, because we've got a lot to cover for tonight. That being said, department priority list, proposed FY 2019, 2020, California City budget. Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and city residents. Tonight, we will continue our discussion on the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget. The discussion will address each department head's priorities list for the projects they anticipate for the upcoming year. The presentation will consist of a review of the full priorities each department head provided to the Finance Department, followed by a recommendation list by the Finance Director and the City Manager. Department heads will all have the opportunity to list, to address council with reasons as to why they need the projects at hand, and council might want to add another priority to the departments. I need to stress that with any priority that's approved this evening, we will need to cut personnel or programs within the department's budget to reach a balanced budget. This is the order of the priorities presentation for this evening. We'll follow up with our previous first budget presentation. We'll present the department goals and priorities the City Manager and I have done, and then by list of department, we will have each one of the priorities lists to be discussed. Since the first workshop, we have estimated additional $50,000 in property tax received and updated our estimates. This brings the deficit lower from the general fund to about $150,000 from what was originally thought to be $200,000. We have reviewed and will revise our estimates for cannabis taxes as more cultivators, manufacturers, and distributors pay their quarterly taxes. We have also updated any monies received from Mayor C. And we have continued our discussion with department heads, the City Manager and I, with department heads to find new ways to balance our budget for the next fiscal year. For this evening, we will review the full list of department's priorities and then offer a recommendation of what City Manager Lynn and Finance Director Bonn would recommend. How we approach this workshop with department heads is we ask for their priority lists and their input. City Manager Lynn and I then later sat down and reviewed what the recommendations we thought would be appropriate at this level. And then we're also still in discussion of what the overall city's priorities should be. First department to be discussed this evening is the OHV program. And what you see on the screen in front of you, or in your slide deck, is the five priorities that Karen Sanders provided to the Finance Department and City Manager. We reviewed these, we saw it as a one-time expense, and also saw the amount that was attached to each priority. From her original list, you can see that she's asking $8,000 of one-time expense for vehicle maintenance, $6,000 of one-time expense for recreation area maintenance, $40,000 of one-time traffic and educational signage, one time of $25,000 for medical and safety supplies, and a one-time cost of $12,000 for permits program administration costs. When City Manager Lynn and I met, we came to the conclusion, and with the recommendation from Karen Sanders, excuse me, that all of her priorities should be accepted, because it's a grant. They're all grant issues, and I will let her more speak to that effect. The only recommendation that City Manager Lynn and I had was the very last priority, which is not reimbursable via grants. But that is an operation cost of about $12,000, which is about $1,000 a month to assist her with her administration costs. At this point, Karen, if you'd like to offer any sort of input or explanation, please do.
I do have paper copies of a PowerPoint presentation that I made, and there's copies here if anyone in the audience would like to have a copy. I'll try to go as quickly as I can, because I know there are other departments who want to do the same thing tonight. OHV in the California City desert area has been managed since 2008. There were some preliminary grants in years prior to that, but the full-time management started in 2008, and the desert recreation opportunities have been going on out there since the 1960s. So people are going to come out here, basically regardless of what, how we manage it. Before we started managing it, they were coming out to California City. When we started managing it, the atmosphere out there changed. There's a little bit more law-abiding activity going on compared to the time prior to that. The next slide that I have, Boraxville, was actually built in 1975. It was a pullout on the way to Galileo Hill. And there's a lot of history. It's close to the Twenty Mill Team Trail. And with the, and I'm going to say this, with the RTP building, that's one of the things that we want to do is to showcase that history and desert lore, and desert flora and fauna. So, basically, I didn't create Boraxville Park. It was there, it's been there since 1975. The green sticker program sort of had a startup here in California City in 2001, when Tom Wheel, when he was the airport manager, and Jack Stewart was the City Manager, they applied for an $80,000 grant for Boraxville Park from then, what was the OHV Commission. The grant process has changed since then, and it's not as scary. It's not Shark Tank anymore, it's based on a score system. And, by the way, we were able to get all of our grants that we applied for to the tune of about $530,000 for this upcoming riding season, which our grants will begin on October the 1st, except for law enforcement, and that's always problematic in recent years because of how the grant is distributed to the law enforcement agencies. They're not actually required to have an OHV recreation program. So you've got places like San Bernardino County and Los Angeles Police Department who get OHV money, but they don't really have an OHV program. Which is kind of a thorn in my side. The grants that we get provide needed funding for California City. Without the grants, we wouldn't be able to manage the area to the degree that we're able to do it. And again, people are going to come here to camp and ride regardless of what our permit fee is, and regardless of whether or not we have anybody stationed out there. The main grant that we get is the Ground Operations Grant. This year, we have a newly awarded amount of $306,752. That's actually less than what we've done in past years, simply because we've accomplished a lot of projects. And so now we're kind of moving into a maintenance phase. We don't have any more articulated concrete projects. There has been good erosion control with the heavy equipment operator doing a good job, and with the erosion control projects that we have. Some of you guys have been out there to see it, and you know what I'm talking about with the articulated concrete. If you haven't and you would like to, I'm ready to go take you out there. Some of the things that we have in the Ground Operations Grant include the park dumpsters and roll-off containers, water service for Boraxville, pest control service for Boraxville buildings. We get water supply parts, janitorial supplies, toilet paper, paper towels, hand soap, cleaning products, signs, lumber, fasteners, decals, paddle markers, solar light maintenance, fence materials and reflectors. And that's the material that we use with the Ground Operations Grant. The law enforcement grant, we only received $60,435. I applied for $185,000, but because of the way that the grant is awarded, we got about 34% of what we asked for. Which is disappointing, because we need that law enforcement money. But again, it's how the money is distributed from the OHMVR Division. It's all legislated. No one gets to make this up. It's by formula, and that's just where California City stood. We have a lot of great volunteers who work with our group. The volunteers have access to some of the same training that regular city staff has. We'll have a first aid class the first weekend in October. We have a Stop the Bleed program going on at 6:00 tonight. I've encouraged the volunteers to attend that. We'll do a man tracking class. We'll do other GPS work. We'll do a landing zone training. So when we have to have helicopters come in, then we help the volunteers learn and understand what their role is when we have to land a helicopter. I have gone home with rocks and dirt in my hair and my ears from rotor wash, but that's just part of it, it's okay. The equipment use and indirect costs on the law enforcement grant include maintenance and operation of the vehicles, including the LE trucks, the side-by-sides or the TOM cars. We have military Humvees that we use for search and rescue and for the law enforcement. The fuel cost for the rented helicopter that we have at Thanksgiving and New Year's. Indirect costs are the grant administration, project management costs, such as payroll, scheduling, invoice preparation, expense tracking, and then utility costs for Boraxville Park substation. The utility and upkeep costs for Boraxville Park are divided between the Ground Operations Grant and the law enforcement grant. The law enforcement grant covers the substation. The ground operation grant covers the shower facilities and the restrooms. It's just how it works out. We were awarded an education and safety grant in the amount of $69,567. That, of course, will be where we will purchase our medical and safety supplies for the program. We'll purchase ID cards and carabiners that we will have for the desert visitors. And the way that I presented the grant this year is also going to allow us to pay for our park aids out of the education and safety grant. They will have to be first aid certified. They'll take that class the first weekend in October. So when we have people who come into the station who have injuries or medical needs, they'll be able to at least get them triaged and get the right people on the way to help them. We were also the recipient of a planning grant in the amount of $80,000. This grant is a three-year grant, so the performance period doesn't end until September 30th of 2022. This will allow us to do all the environmental, the geophysical, the archaeological, all the studies needed for a new RV dump station. We have a city property identified along Twenty Mill Team Parkway between 135th and 140th. That is a good area. It's got a nice place to put an RV dump station, but we have to do all the environmental studies. The planning grant will allow us to do this, and even if we find out that that's not a feasible location, there's some sort of cultural, I don't know, cultural thing there or historical thing there that we're not aware of, the state will still pay for the planning. And then, once we finish with the planning, we can apply for a development grant to help pay for that RV dump station. And then finally, we have received our development grant. The development grant is contingent on whether or not we're actually able to build the RTP building. The grant award was $55,632. We have a $23,000 match on that, which makes for the $78,000 on that RTP grant. But, yeah, on the development grant, that will allow us to flesh out the building, build the reception counter, put counters in the break room slash conference room, TV, projector screen, some office furniture, that kind of thing. And we were approved for that. So I'm excited about that. Then the permits program, it began in 2008 as a function of the OHV recreation program. The permits program is not related to, it doesn't come from the state grants that we get. It comes from us selling the permits to the riding public. The program, by resolution of City Council, helps to ensure that funds are available for the OHV recreation program to use for goods and materials needed for the ongoing maintenance of OHV activity in California City. And one of the pages that I have in your packet of slides is the original resolution that states that that's what that money is for. It was signed in 2008, so that's where the money goes. So when we collect the permits, it allows us an opportunity to interact with the riding public, to answer their questions, to make sure that they know and abide by safe and responsible OHV recreation, know what the parameters are for the private property, know where they can ride, how to get to Ransburg, how to get to various other locations in the desert. So I've talked your ear off, any questions?
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
The $25,000 for the medical supplies? Do we have a doctor overseeing those supplies?
We have a medical director, Dr. Stroh.
And is he involved in purchasing the supplies?
No, he's not involved in purchasing them. The way that we purchase them is based on past practice and things that we have used in responding to accidents and medical calls in the OHV recreation area. We don't get crazy stuff. We have a lot of four-by-fours and curlix and slings and splints and things that you would use in, you know, a little bit more advanced first aid. But, that type of stuff.
Do we have an inventory of the current supplies that we have?
I can get you an inventory of the current supplies that we have, if that's something that you'd like to have, but this isn't a grant that's been approved.
What I would like to see is what we have on hand versus what we're going to need or buy in the future. You know, I was involved in the rescue helicopter program when I was here, and I'd just like to see what's available.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
What is to be the scope of what you've done as far as trail maintenance goes? You know, the wash mitigation that you've done and such. What is the sheer scope with regards to the City of California City?
I'm not sure what you're asking, but the maintenance work that we do is within the city limits of California City. We have many, many roads out in Second Community that are subject to water erosion. And so we keep an eye on them to make sure that there's not ruts and gullies, because those are the things that can cause the most damage to a rider. If they're, you know, they hit a rut or hit a gully, they can take a header off their bike and be injured, and we don't want that to happen. Plus, we have to maintain the routes in Second Community or in that area for emergency services vehicles to be able to pass. So our police vehicles and the fire trucks and so forth have to be able to safely traverse those roads. And that's to the level that we want to maintain those routes.
So I believe I would be interested in seeing the scope of where these kinds of activities would occur with regards to Boraxville, or also, more specifically, about the SDI tracks. Conceivably, you have money, another source of funding within the city for road activity in SDI tracks.
Here's what I know about the SDI tracks. The SDI tracks are actually, to use a road maintenance term, they're dressed by city staff. We go in there if there's some sort of a problem, like I said, with ruts and gullies. But city staff goes out six times a year, two weeks at a time, to dress those SDI tracks, the shoulders and routes. And our connection with it at this point is because they go out that much during the year, we're able to use the daily rental rate on the graders. And that's what pays for the match on the Ground Operations Grant. So we don't, unless there's a problem, we don't physically go to those SDI tracks specifically. But the city Public Works Street Department does maintain those areas, as I said, on a twice, six times a year basis, two weeks at a time.
I would suggest that it's appropriate that if you are making road corrections, that you're correcting drainage issues and restoring the roads in places that are in the SDI tracks, that we need to at least be aware of that and potentially, though there could be funds coming from there. You may be getting matched by use of equipment, but I'm suggesting that if we know that some of the repair work you're doing, your repair work has to be considered valuable also to the landowners.
I would think so.
So what happens is that this is your opportunity to toot your horn to those specific property owners. And that's what, I would just think that this is, you know, the whole purpose of tonight is to kind of get an idea of what these programs are going to turn into over the next five years. That this is supposed to lead to a five-year plan. But part of what you're doing is valuable to those SDI tracks if that's the kind of activity you're doing inside those tracks. In which case, maybe that's an opportunity for matching funds to come from the city through the SDI that might make other opportunities available to you.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's the truth or not, but it just seems in principle that that would work.
It seems possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, I think that's, if we can get a way of quantifying your involvement in those tracks, in those kinds of activities. I'm not suggesting that you take the place of the Street Department and what they do, but you are doing maintenance, or you are doing repairs to those roads that is significant and needs to be tutored as a benefit to the community and a benefit to the property owners out there. So I'd like to know that sort of information.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Karen, you said that you're renting a road grader?
No, we're not renting a road grader. We have a road grader. The city owns a road grader. What happens with the state OHMVR Division regulations, and this is based on their regulations and what other groups do, other agencies, nonprofit groups, when they have, when they own heavy equipment that hasn't been purchased with OHMVR Division funds, like for instance, our grader that we have at Boraxville came from Dermo.
Right.
Okay? The city has two graders. I'm assuming that they purchased those graders with city's general funds. They didn't use OHMVR Division funds to buy those graders. Because they weren't purchased with OHMVR Division funds, the state allows us to use the daily rental rate, which can be derived from either the Caltrans book, or you can call your local rental companies like United Rentals and, I forget the name of the other one down in Acton, but you can call companies like that and say, "Hey, what's your daily rental rate on a 14-foot sweep grader? What's your daily rental rate on a 644E John Deere front-end loader?" And based on that information, which we put in the grant, and say, "I got this from United Rentals," or "I got this from that place in Acton," which I can't remember the name of, but we put it in the grant, and they say, "Okay, that's how much a grader costs in your area per day." And so we can use that as grant on our Ground Operations Grant, and it saves the city a bundle of money.
The state gives us money for that equipment?
It doesn't, they don't give us the money for it. It's match, it's in-kind match. So we're not actually getting money in our hand, but we're allowed to apply it to the, in this case, to the Ground Operations Grant. Because we have to have 25% match at least on the grants. So that daily rental rate on the motor grader can be applied as match for Ground Operations. And we've been doing that since, at least since 2008. So we have, the Ground Operations Grant hasn't cost any money out of pocket to do the work that we've done out there, because we have that daily rental rate. And it's legal, and it's in the regulations, and there are other entities that use that same type of match.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just got this just before the meeting, so I didn't get a chance to see all the numbers.
It's okay.
What was the gross income from the riding permit sales for this past year?
The gross income was about $187,000. Our net revenue was $80,000.
How many permits would that be?
I don't really have that figure off the top of my head because of the way we sell the permits. We sell single permits, family packs, large family pack, small family pack. We also sell the RV dump passes. I can get that answer for you, but I don't know exactly how many right this second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Karen, you gave my wife and I a very good tour, and you showed us roads that you had, that, you know, you guys had done, like going over, like waterways, and you built stuff, and also the wooden signs that you have out there that are really nice, that, you know, actually, some of them would probably be better than the signs in the city that get weathered, you know, but yours are made out of wood, I guess, and they have the street name on them and so on.
Yeah, it's treated wood.
Yes.
It's pressure-treated wood.
But the thing is, I wish that more people in the city could see that, because then they would support the OHV program more. So this isn't knocking your budget or anything, but if there's any way that you could maybe take pictures and maybe have them posted on the city's website so people can see all of the improvements that you're doing out there, i.e., again, the signs, I like the innovative way of doing that, where they don't get weathered by, when we have the strong winds and so on.
Well, actually, they do get weathered, and we have to go back and paint them again.
Okay, but they look, like on my street, you can't even read some of the ones because they've been weathered so much, and, you know, they just look kind of like whitish-green.
Right.
So if you could show that to people and show them all the things that you're doing out there, I think they would be more supportive of OHV. Again, the tour that you gave us, everybody on the council should get a tour like that. I mean, it's very good and informative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just a couple quick questions. In reference to the dump truck, didn't, we've been messing with that for...
We have been messing with it for a long time. But remember, there was that long break, and then we had our former Public Works Director who wanted to go in 50/50 on it, and we can't do that. It has to be strictly the OHV program. And in the grant that we have right now, we have an amount of money that will help us to purchase that truck. But here's another snafu that I just learned today, because I had a conversation with a representative from the Federal Highways Administration, and Jessica Terry from the OHMVR Division. There's a thing with the RTP program that's called Buy America. And everything that we do with the RTP program has to be certified, bought in America. So there's a possibility we won't be able to get the dump truck, because I don't know that a dump truck that would be available for the money that we have could be certified down to the nuts and bolts that it was made in America. They want to know every item for the RTP building, for the dump truck, the dump truck, for any other RTP project that is ongoing now, that it was made in America, bought by America. And last year, President Trump issued an executive order saying there would be no waivers. So that's not my fault.
Looking at your vehicle maintenance, is $8,000 going to cover it? In all seriousness, how many vehicles have you guys got out there? I know that there was three Hummers.
Well, if you'll forgive me for a second, sometimes my brain isn't fully functioning with the fact that there's also a law enforcement grant. sometimes my brain isn't fully functioning with the fact that there's also a law enforcement grant. And so I didn't include the law enforcement grant figures in that $8,000 figure.
Okay.
That's just for ground operations. But because we only get $60,000 for law enforcement, it's going to, it's going to have some fleet maintenance money available, but it's not going to be very much.
Well, the reason why I'm asking, number one, some of the heavy equipment that you do have out there, like the blade, and if that gets broken, usually when something like that goes down, it's usually high dollars.
And we just experienced that this past year.
And so now my question is, is $8,000 going to cover it?
Maybe. I have much more money in the grants than I have listed on, on the budget.
Okay.
Right now, we're just, and for the grants purposes, we're talking about between now and the end of September, because then I have this new money coming in.
Okay, all right. And on, on the maintenance for, for law enforcement, on the, on the vehicles? We had one of our, one of our white pickup trucks got damaged about a year and a half ago, two years? Where they were rolling out to try and get to somebody that crashed out in the middle of nowhere. And the vehicle slid down and caught some rocks. Nothing major, it's all cosmetic. But could we use that money to get the vehicle fixed?
It would come out of the law enforcement grant. So that, that's a, current year, we have $128,000 allocated for the law enforcement grant. So those, those repairs would have been out of...
Will have to come out of that, okay.
For September 30th.
Okay, what's police technician?
Are you talking about me?
Oh, well, I'm just asking a question. I'm looking at goals and stuff, and it says, police technician.
Goals under the priorities or the five-year plan and forecast?
Goals, vision, number one. Number one, on the top, on the first page, we're under goals near the bottom. OHV officer, four reserve officers, multiple volunteers,
Oh, got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. Police technician for OHV purposes, for law enforcement purposes, would be like a dispatcher? We have to give them kind of clever names. Yes. Sometimes when I work at Borax Bill, depending on my function, I claim my time as a, as a technician.
And how many total volunteers do we have?
We have about 14 volunteers right now. And now that you say that, we're having a volunteer recruitment on the 17th at Borax Bill.
And those volunteers, is that all dirt?
Uh, for this, yeah.
Yeah, that's all, that's all dirt volunteers.
Desert Incident Response Team. Yeah, we have some VIPS who, that's the volunteers in police or volunteers in public service, who also are dirt team members.
So they...
They, you know, whatever the need is, then they occupy that need.
And the permit program administration costs $12,000. Where's that money come from again?
Permit sales.
Just the permit sales.
Yeah, I can't use any grant for permit function. There's no, there's no connection fund-wise between where money comes for the permits and where money comes for the grants. I can, in fact, I have to apply some of the permit money to the grants, because sometimes we have to come up with cash match. That's when we buy something and give them a receipt and say, okay, we spent this much money. But there's no funding by the state of California for our permits program. It's, it's strictly a municipal function.
Thank you.
What's the fiscal impact per volunteer? Workman's comp, what do we, what's it costing us per volunteer?
The city does pay workman's comp, and I'm sorry, I don't know that answer. But I do know that the value of a volunteer, when it comes to counting their value on a grant, can be anywhere from $24 down to $15 an hour.
The approximate, we, we've had to calculate this in the past. And I want to say it's, depending on what their volunteer function is and their assignment, it can be anywhere from about 50 cents to a dollar an hour, is what the city costs to be for a volunteer in a workman's comp.
Karen, I have one more thing on the...
Sure.
Going back to the medical supplies. Do we have a licensed paramedic this year that's going to be overseeing that? We had in the past?
No, he doesn't work for the city anymore.
Okay, so we don't have anyone else coming in to provide that service?
Well, we do have a volunteer who is a licensed paramedic, but he just started with us. But he is a volunteer, he's not a paid city staff member. He's a retired firefighter from San Bernardino County. And he wants to come to the desert to play, because that's what we like to do. But I don't have anyone on staff who's paid who is a paramedic. I have EMTs who are volunteers. All of us are well-versed in first aid, triage, and that sort of thing. But I don't have a, a paid volunteer, he's no longer, I mean, a paid, a paramedic.
Can we pull from fire? What, what I'm getting at is, I would like a paramedic basically in charge of our medical, you know, overseeing what we're buying and what we're doing, just for liability reasons. I know the four-by-fours and the standard stuff, but are you buying IV fluids?
No. That's, that's out of our scope.
That's out of our scope.
That's out of our scope. Our, our goal is to make sure that people aren't bleeding. And many times...
Where are the airways, stop the bleeding?
Yeah, we're, we're just, in fact, if they come into the station, if they come into Borax Bill and they've got a laceration or whatever, we give them the gauze and say, hold this here. Because they need to be distracted, number one. And number two, that pressure helps to stop the bleeding. I mean, that's kind of a silly thing, but, and then we get the firefighters or our qualified police officers to come out and give us further direction.
What about our AEDs?
Well, AEDs can be used by anyone. We have AED training, because when we do our first aid class, we have the first aid CPR. But if something happened right now, you could go over to the AED and it would tell you what to do. But that is part of our training for our staff and volunteers.
And do they have to be certified, the equipment?
Yes, we have AEDs that have to be checked monthly. And I send a report to More Medical every month that says that our AEDs are okay. Here in the next couple of months, we'll have to replace the pads on one of them because it hasn't been used. And you have to replace the pads on the AED. So that's something that's on my radar.
So are you doing the inspections on them, or who's certified to do the inspection?
Well, you don't have to be certified to do the inspection. You pop the battery off the back and put it back on, and it tells you what to do. I'm certified as far as first aid and CPR.
Understand, I'm just...
But I'm not a medical person, but you pop the battery off, and then when you put it back on, it proceeds to tell you to check the device, push this button. If this light is flashing, push it. I mean, it's, it's very straightforward.
So the state doesn't have licensed people, they don't license peoples to, that are certified to check our AEDs?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Oh, and I was going to tell you, I do have my five-year plan here if you want it.
The next department that we will be reviewing this evening is the planning department. Their original goal is being stipulated on, in the current slide. We've got five goals with the Airport Area Rezoning Project, which is a one-time expense between $40,000 and $70,000. A city text amended GPA project, which is a one-time advertising charge between $400,000 and $500,000. A California city corridor study, one-time charge of $17,000. General plan update, a one-time of $40,000. Economic development outreach, one-time of $25,000. When we reviewed this, city manager Lynn and I were very concerned with some of the costs that were being added. And our recommendation, or we're just seeking an explanation of their first goal, which is the Airport Area Rezoning Project, as to why it's costing $70,000. So with that, Mr. Alexander, if you'd like to come to the podium and...
Sure, good evening. First of all, I'd like to point out that we have one department, it's called Community Development. It was approved in February, it came before the city council. And the Community Development Department includes the Planning Division and the Building Division. And the intent for including both divisions is, we established it last February, as I say, to be more pro-business and pro-development. And it was to offer more efficient and expedited development services on behalf of our growing cannabis industry to their entrepreneurs. Prior to establishing this Community Development Department, the planning function here was carried out from the Public Works Department. And the site plan review process was extremely cumbersome and created numerous delays and setbacks. So the new process is much more efficient. I believe everyone will agree, site plans are getting reviewed and approved within under 30 days, sometimes even quicker. The functions of the new Community Development Department include review of general plan amendments, zone changes, conditionally used permits, subdivisions, lot mergers, site plan review, environmental assessments. Assessment, also issuance of building permits, occupancy permits, cannabis permits. And in addition to processing all of these site plan reviews and development permits, our staff also staffs the planning commission. The staff is currently one half-time Community Development Director, a senior building inspector, a city planner slash economic development administrator. We had an associate planner, that position is currently vacant, a certified permit technician, and a clerk typist. Also, in order to provide special services to the city's cannabis entrepreneurs and to ensure that the product is properly taxed, it's recommended that an additional staff position entitled Cannabis Control Officer be approved for 2019, 20 fiscal year. The qualifications for this position would include familiarity with the best accounting practices. In our report to the council, we've identified 12 goals. I'm not going to recite them all to you in the interest of time. But I will point out that, I'll just give you a couple of examples. One of our developers and entrepreneurs by exploring development agreement opportunities and other innovative techniques that will facilitate the objective of establishing a thriving cannabis industry within California City. This is something we haven't done enough of, in our opinion. And we would like to make opportunities to do development agreements where readily available to our developers. As Diego mentioned, we had identified five priorities because we understood the city council wanted to hear our priorities. I'd like to go over them briefly with you. Is there any objection to that? Okay, well, first of all, the airports, the Airport Area Rezoning Project. And the cost for that miraculously is now reduced to about $10,000 in lieu of the originally estimated $70,000. Why there's such a big difference in that cost estimate is that the original concept was, let me tell you what the airport area consists of, first of all. We're looking at 147 parcels. Most of them are currently zoned, C2, commercial. All of them are vacant. And it includes about 52 acres. This area is generally in the area of Lindbergh Boulevard, all the way down to Yerba Boulevard. Okay, numerous parcels, quite small. But in the opinion of the planning commission, all these areas that are mostly zoned commercial, if they were to be rezoned to M1, that would open up the opportunity for cannabis growhouses, cannabis entrepreneurs. And it would actually streamline things tremendously in trying to create a more growing cannabis industry. The difference in the cost is that when we conceived the project originally, and, and the council knows how cumbersome the SEQA process is, California Environmental Equality Act staying in compliance with them, we thought that at the get-go, we would do a complete environmental assessment in environmental studies. It was the recommendation of our SEQA consultant that we forego that. We simply issue for the zone change and general plan amendment. We are recommending that we simply go forward with a, it's called a categorical exemption. That's not going to stick with the State Department of Cannabis control at the time that the individuals are wanting to open their facilities. So what will be needed will be a more intensive, typically it's called a negative environmental assess, or a negative declaration, that will be required at the time they want to move forward with their individual developments and pull their building permits. But we're, rather than doing that upfront, we're going to put that burden, if you consider it a burden to pay for that consultant cost, on the individuals. So that, that cost has just gone from the city, and we don't anticipate more than about $10,000 to facilitate this whole program.
Quick question, how many parcels, so I see here, 122 parcels are proposed to be rezoned from C2 to M1, is that correct?
Yes.
And then 25 parcels from residential to C2?
Yes.
That's our plan?
Yes, sir. And, and the reason for that is, if you go south of Lindbergh, some of them are currently zoned residential, they have to be commercial because when you set up the cannabis ordinance, there's a minimum 200-foot distance so, to a residentially zoned property. So these properties on the south of Lindbergh will actually, actually can facilitate the cannabis industry with other types of commercial uses.
Matthew, one thing that really upsets me is, we have a $70,000 bill that's on the PowerPoint, and now we're told that it's $10,000. So I get upset when I see, has everybody done their due diligence as far as festering out and finding out what are the actual costs? And especially when we do a budget like this, we have so much money in our budget. We, Mr. Ibanez has been working on that. And, you know, if you talk about cost accounting, that's overstated when the actual fact that it's going to be $10,000.
Correct.
So before you come to us, you know, all of this stuff should have been gone through over and over. Are we sure about this? Are we sure about that? And that's what makes us appear, when we see things from, see that change, it really makes us go, wow. And, and you know, to, to, I don't know, like I said, it just frustrates me to sit up here and, and have to go through seeing a change of $60,000, which, you know, is, is like 12%. Now the actual cost is going to be 13 or 14% of what the original was. Another thing, the area that you're talking about, that Councilman Paris asked you about, it's going to go from Lindbergh to where? What are the boundaries on the southern boundary, the northern boundary, eastern and western boundaries?
If, if you're driving up Mitchell
Yes.
to the airport, some of these parcels would go extend to the west of Mitchell slightly. I, I was planning to do a PowerPoint, but I was told that it wasn't going to be required or requested.
No, I'm just, just, you don't, I'm not trying to pin you exactly, but from Mitchell...
So it'll be along Lindbergh, all entirely to the north of Lindbergh. There are numerous parcels in there. There are streets like Van Buren and Lay is one of them, all the way over to Yerba.
Okay, and so, so on the west, it'd be Mitchell. On the east, it would be Yerba. South would be Lindbergh, and then up...
To the airport.
Okay, good, okay. Again, I'm not trying to, I, I just don't like seeing 70,000 down to 10,000.
Sure, no, and, and we appreciate that. And again, I think many in the profession would recommend that we did the, all the heavy environmental work upfront. And that would cost easily $70,000 to do thorough environmental evaluations and negative declarations. It's just that we were told by a SEQA consultant very recently that this money may not, it may create more issues than we'd resolve. So the best way would proceed with the zone change and a categorical exemption.
Understand, but when, when I was here, I went with Mr. Tuigig and a bunch of other people, and we had, we had Sarah Paulson come out and a bunch of other people. And they basically told us that the city is in charge of this, and if... And they basically told us that the city is in charge of this, and if the city saw a negative declaration, and they also, I can't remember all the terms, they used the technical terms, but we were in charge of that. And so if we were satisfied with what the biologist told us, that we could just go forth and say that we have a negative finding and go forth and build.
Lead agent.
Lead agent. So am I correct on that?
I wish you were. It's much more complicated than our, our desires.
Well, we had, we had Fish and Wildlife there, so they were telling us that. We had also, we had Mark Hagan there, we had a bunch of other people, and they were all in agreement. Sean even came out for a short time, so they were all in agreement with that. So if that is in fact the, the truth, then we, why aren't we abiding by that, and why aren't we building out there and getting things done?
Well, you'll have to talk to the builders as to why they're not building sooner. But in, in, in terms of the environmental review, we, we do our very, very best to expedite these projects. We don't make, want, try to make them more cumbersome. When I tell you that a negative declaration will be required, I'm not making it harder than it has to be.
I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is, I talked to Paulson, I talked to the, so I talked to Fish and Wildlife, I talked to all kinds of people, biologists and so on. And they, since we are the lead agency, we don't have to rely on somebody else, we can go by and make that determination ourselves. That's what I was taught to believe, and, and Sean, you were there, and I think that you heard those words also. So if those words are true, then we should be doing it.
Sure.
Just to clarify, if, if, it, it, we are a lead agency when it comes to SEQA. But however, when it comes to cannabis, yeah, they, they have to go through the state. So the state can say, oh, this, this SEQA might be okay for, for the, the development from the city side, but we still require this amount of SEQA to then determine the amount of value for the, for the habitat. And then from there, they can establish how much that habitat is worth.
Well, you're talking about now take permits, and I'm not talking about take permits. I mean, I don't think that every piece of property requires a take permit. And, and again, that's my understanding of talking to the Fish and Wildlife people when they were here. I have a different understanding of what they told me than what you're saying now. I don't think that every piece of property in our city requires a take permit. There were some areas that we went to, we went to about five or six different locations, and they even said, nope, there's nothing here. We can tell that there's nothing here, a take permit is not required in this place here.
And so, for example, just an example of what I'm saying, if you were out on Mitchell, you'll notice this very large retention basin that's for a project that, that is going on out there. They've hit a roadblock with Fish and Wildlife at the state level. They're not going to give them their annual permit because they were given an exemption that they didn't see was fit. So they're hitting that roadblock because the due diligence wasn't done at the site level for SEQA.
Thank you.
Councilman Stone, what has happened is the State Cannabis Control Act, they, the state has put different controls because it's cannabis, where we thought that Fish and Wildlife, if they say we can do it, we could go in and do it. And all of a sudden, the state put another agency in there in charge of cannabis that says, oh, no, wait a minute, you can't do it. So that's the roadblock there, is even though we got by Fish and Wildlife and everybody else on SEQA, now the Cannabis Control Act kicks in, and the state says, wait a minute, since it's cannabis, you're going to have to do more.
Okay, understand.
And just to clarify, I don't think it was a lack of preparedness on Matt's part, I think you found out recently that you didn't need the consultant, which is the sixty thousand dollar difference.
And I was, again.
It could be done administratively, but there still is a cost to get it done.
And, and I had a question on that, so it, instead of us paying for that consultant fee now, that's going to be by the person doing the project?
Individually, yes. After, the, the intent is, and we're moving forward, we've sent out notices already for the planning commission public hearing, and then we will be moving forward to the city council public hearings for all this rezoning of all these parcels.
So, well, I just want to clarify in my mind, for the, the SEQA consultant, that is going to be paid by the people doing the projects?
Yes, exactly.
We're going to be a, like a bypass type thing?
That would be ideal, yes, yes, yeah.
And Matthew, I didn't mean to, you know, I wasn't, I'm just, you know, the price. So understand that, you know, I'm not knocking you or knocking Sean or anything, we're just, we're all on the same team, all trying to do the same thing, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Meyer?
Sir.
Jean, I'm, I'm looking at this and saying to myself, this is very limited, limited project here. Where, and, and, and maybe that's a more important issue for us, sitting up here, talking about five-year plans and, and, and future other uses of the airport properties. At some point in time, I, I think, if I can say something about our private conversations, we've been talked, talked, talked to about potentially having a city utility. Isn't, isn't the north side of the airport an ideal location with very little use, but nothing's planned? I, I, I don't know what the master plan looks like for the airport, but, but I don't know that we've ever spent any money really looking at that site as being a potential for, for industrial development. This is what we've done up to this point, we're, we're, we're doing that, but when does that envision get bigger than, than thirty blocks? You know, we're, we're, we're kind of, you know, you, we're up here saying that there's some bold ideas that are coming out that can't happen without a plan, a master plan being done. And, and we're going to look at this, and this will be my big question, it's going to come up. This is a little rezoning project, okay, I, I get that. We're, we're going to look at a general plan update, we're talking about master fee resolutions for, or water studies, for, for water rates later. Aren't these all planning documents? And should, I mean, shouldn't, who, who should be the person leading at least the listing of planning documents? So we know where we're going with all of these endeavors that we need to do to, to grow the town. You're focused right here in saying, you want to know where it is, but it's not encompassing enough of the airport for me. But it also doesn't tell me what's the process going to be that allows us to prepare for that, for that, for that next possibility that we have to pursue. You know, we're going to have to invest money in, and, and, and develop in, in industrial area, and logically speaking, that north side's just waiting for us, I, I think.
Just to update you, my family owned twelve greenhouses north of the airport. We had electric, water, and power all put into the north side of the airport. And before, just as we purchased the property, the city took the electrical out, all the way from Norelia all the way out to that property, and because it was overhead wires, they, yep, they had Edison come in and take it out. So there's still water, there's still gas all the way on the north end. And if you drive out there, you can see the foundations of the greenhouses. It was all there and operational, and then they took the power out, and this was twenty-five years ago, they did it on us, so. It, but that property, like you said, is prime, you know, if we can.
I'm just saying is that, is that, is that, we're listening, we're looking at here at lists of, of, of planning projects for nineteen and twenty, but, but realistically, someplace along the line, we have to, it may, these projects need to be scoped to allow us to, to grow in other ways. And I, and I don't know what they are, and I'm not a, that's not my area of expertise, my focus is rather small. But the point is, is that some of these things, my question will be, you know, what are all the planning projects that we have? What are the, what do they look like, and when, and when are they capable of helping us develop the community? You know, when, 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 when a developer comes, what, what can we do to, to point them in the right direction and say that this is a wonderful fit for our community?
And that's a, that's a great idea, and I think the planning department's been working on that, and the process has gotten better. I know that we're planning a corp, a meeting with the council and the planning commission, where those questions can be addressed, hashed out. What date is that?
It hasn't been set yet.
Official, okay, we'll pick a Friday.
We're getting closer.
During the day.
Yes, yeah, a joint meeting, the commission has requested that.
So that we can all have clarity, and you guys can understand the plan.
But this is a budget issue, I mean, right up here, we're, we're receiving reports that are supposed to, one, help us to deliberate the budget approval process next week or whenever we finish it. But two, it's like, how do we, how do we coordinate all these planning processes so that, so that when somebody comes, we have a, a way to help them achieve their, their, their goals here inside our community? Because right now, we don't. Right now, right now, everybody hits a block wall and, and stops. And, and this is just one little project for one little industry is what you're doing right now, but it really doesn't address the community growing on something that's, you know, moving on to the next, to the next.
But I do, I do believe you have priority number four in your, even though it was Xed out earlier.
Yeah, maybe we weren't.
This would be the general plan update.
Maybe we weren't clear also, because like Karen Sanders has a document that she gave to us, and it shows five years out. And if you have all of these plans for a million different projects, and I know you do, I know the city manager has those, if we could have seen something like that, because we need to project, like maybe this year it's ten thousand or whatever, but next year, because you have projects X, Y, Z, it needs, needs to be a different amount, and the year after you have something else coming and so on. You know, we need to, to know that so we can plan appropriately.
Yeah, well, if, if I may speak to item number four, it's, we're, project name, general plan update. Essentially, California City General Plan was last updated in two thousand nine. And incidentally, our population growth since two thousand ten has been very stagnant. But now it's time to review the general plan, have a general plan update. And so the staff is recommending that we do just that. And this would concentrate on the land use element. The huge area currently designated open space rural agricultural is exceedingly limited to the kind of developments that may occur. I think you all know that. That's why when anyone wants to do anything, I mean, it's over eighty percent is currently O R A. So basically, it means if you want to do something, you have to get a general plan amendment and a zone change, and that's very, very cumbersome right now. So if we had the ability to update the general plan, we would be in a much better place, and it would be exactly what Councilman Lusinovich is talking about. We'd be able to plan ahead rather than reacting, it's more proactive planning than reactive planning. And, and so our cost estimate for that, we, we believe that the new general plan update, which would focus on land use, we'd be basically looking at spending forty thousand dollars for this effort. And essentially, we, we believe that the return to investment would be anywhere between three hundred thousand and a million dollars because we'd be expediting more plans along the way, more developers would have, find it easier. They wouldn't have to go through a cumbersome zoning process, general plan amendment process.
Matt, what's included in the forty thousand, does that include legal fees, consultants?
Pretty much, yeah. And, and I might say, you know, DJ this afternoon emailed us something, Palm Dale is starting a new general plan amendment process. They're having some workshops at the end of August. And so I called the city of Palm Dale and talked to their staff. You might be interested to know that to amend the Palm Dale general plan, they're looking at a three-year process, and includes all of the environmental review. They're talking, they, they signed a contract with a consultant for two point one million dollars. So this is an expensive business. The reason we have it down to just forty thousand dollars, that would be for this fiscal year. We're looking at twelve months, primarily staff would take the lead, we would use some consulting on a limited basis, but the staff would take the lead with the planning commission, we'd hold workshops, we'd probably look to the council to appoint a task force to look at our general plan. But we look at next fiscal year to do the environmental, actual environmental work, because forty thousand isn't going to get you much, but it would get us a very good start, we believe.
Do you suppose that we could maybe have a list of the, of the ma, master plans that we do have, whether it be the airport? I, I'm sure we have a parks, we have a housing element, we have water, and, I mean, I, I really don't even know what all we have to have in terms of planning documents, planning, planning processes in place, but I'd love to have a list of all of them. I, at one time, COG was funding various ones of these on a regular basis, you know. This is the flavor of this two years, and you, and if you come in, we'll give you money, and we'll hire the consultant, and you can use our consultants to do it. So I would sit back and say that not only should we know what, what all do we need to be looking at, but we, reaching out to the professionals and sharing the costs with them, and that might be a way to, to maybe get a better product and, and, and have it be more professional at the same time for less money.
Absolutely.
But I would say, I would, I would reach out to COG because they have done that in the past. Matt, the general plans they've done, airport plans, I think they've been involved in. I'm, I'm sure that if we had an airport plan that we were working on, that Mojave, the airport district would be involved and, and contributing towards it. But like I said, I, I, I don't have a clue how many, how many different things. I know we have an emergency plan that, that, that came up, which went across our desk for about a week or two, and then it disappeared. And then it only comes up again when, when there's a, a, another, a seven, a seven point O earthquake. But the point is, is that, huh? But there's a lot of master pla, there's a lot of plans, and, and I'd love to see what they are, just to, just so I could have, maybe I'll put it in front of my binder and, and look at it every time we come to a, a meeting here and cry. Anyway, thank, anyway, thank you.
If I may also talk about another program that the planning commissioners are very excited about. It, it's called the California City Boulevard Corridor Study. Corridor Planning Study represents an opportunity to engage California City residents and the California City Boulevard businesses in the identification of issues in order to project visioning leading to the identification of potential improvement alternatives. So we're talking about street furniture, landscaping, signage, all of the elements that go into what makes for the corridor interesting. We're also talking about possibly a better utilization of the frontage roads along California City Boulevard. So we have been in touch with the faculty at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. They would like to work with us and put together a student studio project, and the cost of that would be seventeen thousand dollars. The purpose would be, it would actually pay for the students, their travel and spending the night here to, in order to better familiarize themselves. It wouldn't go to any faculty members, that would be just part of the package. We think it would be very worthwhile. We believe that the return from investing would be a very healthy business environment, generating increased sales. And it would be substantial by generating between twenty thousand to sixty thousand dollars in new sales tax revenues after the initial study and after the first year. So we look at a one-time cost of seventeen thousand dollars, the rest would be born and house on the part of our staff to prepare this study. It's being requested by Cal Poly to underwrite the students' travel lodging meals and materials. And in terms of the ongoing cost, it's anticipated from the public, there, there would be other costs associated with the public improvements. But again, we'd be able to phase those on a, on an annual basis thereafter, like, you know, street furniture and.
What kind of students are those?
These would be both graduate students and undergraduate students at Cal Poly.
What, what?
Planning curriculum.
Civic planning?
Yes, yeah.
No, no engineering, no, no?
Probably involve architecture students because there is a design element to this.
My question is, is this basically the same type of thinking like the city of? My question is, is this basically the same type of thinking like the city of Lancaster did?
Yes.
For Lancaster Boulevard?
Yes. Yeah.
My, my only concern on that is California City Boulevard is a, is an emergency.
Major arterial. Four, four through lanes, yes, yeah.
If there's a tragedy out on fourteen and fifty-eight that they, they have to go through.
Right.
And it's coming through our boulevard.
Right.
I don't know, is Tatchby Boulevard?
It's a highway, probably.
No, no.
We think the idea of having park in the center is very intriguing, but it's not necessary to California City Boulevard. That we're not talking about taking away the four travel lanes, two in each direction.
I'd like to get a little bit more information on that.
Sure.
We're not approving anything. We're just hearing the ideas today.
No, no, I just, I just need some more information so I can look at it to help me.
Basically, that, that's it. Those were the projects that the staff had recommended. We, we hope you will consider them. The general plan update is very important. I know that we'll be better off a year from now if we do go through an update process in this next ensuing fiscal year.
And Matthew, do you have a five-year budget or anything like that over there?
I have not prepared a five-year budget, no. But we can do that.
Great answer. Nice catch.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continuing with the department priority list, we have our human resources department who put together a list for their goals for the incoming fiscal year. First one is a lactating room with a one-time cost of eleven thousand. Office furniture update, one-time cost for eleven thousand. Our time clerk staff, an ongoing cast, cost of thirty thousand. I did, if I can just interrupt, I did remind every department head that we were not looking to add any new personnel. So they are aware of that. That's in a, that's refers to the first workshop we had. But I just put it up here because it was their, their priority list that I wanted council to review. They're also asking for onboarding software, which is a one-time cost of twenty thousand. Online municipal policies development software, one-time cost of fifteen thousand. And training certification for our, their payroll H R employees, a one-time cost of twenty-five hundred. City manager Lynn will review as to our, what our recommendation was. It's just supporting the lactating room because it is a legal compliance issue.
That's more, just one quick question.
Sure.
Dealing with that subject matter? How are you going to fit that in there with all the equipment that's in there right now?
We're going to put it upstairs. No, I'm just kidding. We are gonna figure it out. We're gonna have to, um.
Could we not put it in the mayor's office? I'll, I'll take it. I don't care.
We'll have to find room for it. I know that when Granicus comes on, we're going to be moving all that submarine-looking media stuff. It's gonna be smaller and we're gonna put it into the, the storage room, supply room. Yeah. So we'll have that space. We also, I mean, I'm not sure. I'm sure Joe will try to configure it. Yeah. It'll be a small space, but it'll have what, what law requires.
Yeah, that's, that's my question because that's going to be about the size of a closet.
Yeah.
In all seriousness.
I nurse in a bathroom, so. Yeah. Yeah.
Jail cell, okay.
But it'll have everything she needs, a refrigerator for the milk and.
Okay, and it's, it's going to have its own wash station?
Right now, allocated in the nineteen twenty budget is two hundred and thirty-four thousand for the H R department. As far as furniture, the extra staff and onboarding software, I think we're okay right now. Maybe we'll look at it at the mid-year review. As far as the policy development software, I took that out because ParsAC, we have a balance that we can use of thirty-four thousand that will help us with that. And also ParsAC, we have five thousand that'll help pay for certification and training moving forward. So I think we're fine there. We just need the eleven thousand added to the two thirty-four for the lactating room. Any questions?
I was wondering when we were going to get questioned about that because that came into effect a few years ago. And that was a big thing. Matter of fact, when they just built the new highway patrol office, which is now like fifteen thousand square feet or better, they have to have that in. All new offices have to have that in, installed in, into the buildings.
And for policies, and I'll of course bring it back to the council, but with thirty-four thousand, if there's a additional costs for attorneys to review it, we are in desperate need to have policies updated. Where new laws have come into place the last few years, so, I mean, that's a mandatory thing that we have to do. But right now, we think the thirty-four thousand will help us get that done. And just like Matt said, a lot of it's going to have to be done in-house. So the staff will take the lead on that as well, and I will.
All right, cool. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No questions? We're good to go.
So moving on to our parks department, Parks Director Brenda.
Brenda Gervin is on vacation.
She's on vacation. But she did submit four, four goals for the Parks and Rec. And one was the seating benches for Central Park, a one-time cost of five thousand. A pool refencing, refencing project of a one-time cost of around twenty-five thousand. Little League fencing, it's an ongoing cost of ten thousand. And community events, which is actually an annual cost of twenty-three thousand. When city manager Lynn and I reviewed it, we stuck to her budget or her suggestions because there is a need for the benches. The projects do need to, the refencing project does need to be upgraded. Little League fencing, she described it as being in such a condition that it's not playable. And in order to encourage placement and recreation in that part of town, we would need that. And then the community.
Well, are we talking, we're, Balsidas Park, correct? For that fencing? Was that Balsidas Park or Central?
Central Park is what I think.
Central Park?
Yeah.
And then the community events that she has listed up there entails the Renaissance Fair, Turtles, Tortoise Days.
He's not from here, Tortoise.
And everything within that. We allocated in the current budget for fiscal year nineteen twenty eighty-five thousand. And in her four priorities list, she's at sixty-three thousand. Add up to your sort of attention for having it, you know, for review. That's, that's kind of the information she told me to relay.
My question, how many benches do we get? Because I know, I know we lost tables.
Thereabout.
And, and barbecue places and stuff when they were taking out the old playground stuff. Putting the new stuff in, a bunch of stuff got removed.
In order to be ADA compliant in the catalog for that, they're anywhere from six hundred to a thousand, twelve hundred if we want to get fancy, but Brenda seems to keep the benches pretty simple. Or she'll work with what she gets.
Thank you.
So these are, these are priorities, but it still isn't helping us with understanding how expensive Parks and Rec is. And I, I, I really don't care about any lists here. If I can't put a price to, to all the parks in the central, the medians and the grass in front of City Hall and the chamber building, I, I think, I think we have to really see that, that cost and the cost of the employees that maintain it. And then put the Parks and Rec into that picture to say whether this is even, you know, whether we even care about this. Because I suspect that those costs are a lot higher than, than, uh, I want to talk about. I personally, I personally believe that Tierra del Sol is not an enterprise at this point. We took it over. It's our, it's our little baby. And I, I would, I would, I would prefer to see it be part of Parks and Recreation because that's, that is who's taking care of it. That's where all the money is coming from for it. And then it may be that that, that may be more, far more important than, than what we're seeing here as a list. But the list doesn't mean anything to me without knowing what, what the total cost is to us. And, and I want to see that before we go much further.
As we wrap up to this evening's workshop, I will take all these costs and what we've been, we've been putting it in our financial model and coming up with estimates and then having discussions with department heads in terms of saying what each one of your goals is costing us and, or what's going to cost your department and having a conversation with them first and giving them an opportunity to say, you're right, we should not do this at this point in the budget. We should come back at mid-year or we should come back next year. And then coming to council with a solid sort of discussion between city manager, finance director and department head to kind of present and say, this is exactly what the parks or what fire or et cetera, one city department is going to cost us.
Well, I'm focused here on the, on Parks and Recreation and, and all I'm trying to say is that, that this isn't California City Parks Priority Lists, it's California City Parks Program List. And that doesn't reflect the cost of the Parks Program of the parks to this, to the general fund. And I, and I, and I don't even want to, I don't really even want to deal with this until I've, until I've seen what the full impact is of all of parks activities. You know, the watering of, of, of the medians and, and, and the maintenance costs. And, and you know, as far as community events, that, that just, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I, I agree.
I think they're over, I think the real numbers overwhelm those and, and then we have to have that talk about what is important. And that's far more, I mean, I, I think that's, that's more direct to the issues to, to this particular department. It's never been coordinated.
That's right.
I think that's the part that, that bothers me, that bothers me more than anything else is that there's, there's, there's someone that's in the, in the Stratus Center that has no relationship to what's going on in the par three. Why is the par three the way it is right now? Nobody, nobody has director status with that, with that, with that facility. Nobody's in charge of it. Nobody, nobody has any answer for why it looks the way it is. And nobody's giving us a plan on what we're going to do with it now that we can't afford it.
One, one thing that, that I agree with Dr. Nick and what he's saying is, you know, when we tried to impose zero-based budgeting, it would start off with, you have revenue over here and then a list of priorities. Not a list of want list, but like your personnel costs are this. So you have all your personnel costs, then how much in overtime are you going to have? You know, and do you need to hire more people? And those are all in your priority list. Then how much is the watering going to cost? And you, and you know, you put all of these things in there and you put them in priority. And since the city manager and the finance director, you guys might tell the, the parks, well, no, you have to pay for this because that should be a higher priority. So you move that up. And as Dr. Nick said, you know, how much, how much is watering of the median going to cost? Because that's probably under Parks and Rec.
In the past, it was never really realized or identified in that category. It was a lump sum to a city bill and we've never allocated it in the right area. So I think what you're speaking to is we're not just talking about Tortoise Days. We're talking about how much the water cost is, we're, we're blaming it all on Tierra del Sol. When we realize about six hundred and eighty thousand of it goes there, where does the other portion of the one point two million go? And right now, it is identified under Parks and Rec in, in function, but not in budget. And that's what, that's what we need to identify.
Yep. Because if we identify every single item, there are some, and, and if we get a priority list, you know, this fifty-three thousand from eighty-something thousand, you know, we think we're saving maybe twenty, thirty thousand, but we're really, there's a, an avalanche somewhere else where we're paying, you know, four hundred thousand dollars that maybe we need to eliminate, you know, to even make this reasonable.
I agree.
So, so we really, as we've talked before, we need to know all of these things on how much money Parks and Rec is really spending. The Stratus Center, you know, by being open all the time, and what about emergencies? There should be an emergency fund because if we have an earthquake again, if we're going to put people in there or if we have, even though it's August now, we could have some hot days where people are over there and, you know, to get the cooling that's in that building, you know, some money should be put aside for that. You know, maybe, I don't know, but it's going to be increased amount for air conditioning. And so these are things that we need to, when we do zero-based budgeting, those are things that we need to look at. And we have not done that totally. I mean, I, I appreciate, I have Andy's five-year projection thing that Mr. Ibanez sent me and it's great. And it shows all kinds of projections in the future. But we need to know now on how much we're paying for everything. Every single thing needs to be in its box and so on.
And yeah, and I think we're looking at that. We're looking at pretty harsh numbers that we realize with the cost we've never identified or the loss of the golf course, the airport, dial-a-ride. So yeah, we need to look at the water bill and we see where it's allocated. We may need to cut back. We have four point one of the general fund to work with and that's it. And Parks and Rec is essential, but you've asked for details. We'll get you guys details on exactly how much everything costs and why the function is necessary.
That would be appreciated. Thank you. I think everybody has our concerns. Next up.
Moving on, we've got the California City Fire Department. They provided us with four of their goals. Fire engine purchase, which is an ongoing purchase of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Cardiac monitors with one, one-time expense of a hundred and fifty thousand. Staff vehicles, one-time charge of eighty thousand. Rescue tools of one time of twenty-four thousand. Recommendation, we have already included the hundred and ninety-eight thousand in the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget and carrying it forward. And then we would just need more explanation in terms of the car, cardiac monitors, one time. Why is it such an extreme expense? We chose not to follow up on staff or the rescue tools. I'll let Chief Goodell address that. But in terms from a finance and city manager perspective, this is what we would recommend at this point. But that, I thought he was in the audience.
But you will send us details on what these cardiac monitors are? That seems, that seems, I mean, if, if, I don't know if each vehicle, each truck has to have one.
I think there's one on each.
And those are my questions. I'm going to ask staff too.
Seems awfully expensive for, for, for two trucks or three trucks.
My, my question, and I asked this to Mr. Ibanez yesterday, or yesterday, right? When have we ever had four people having cardiac problems in the city at the same time? I mean, we don't have the personnel, we're not going to send four firemen each in a vehicle to four different locations. So I don't see why we need four if that's the cost for four.
Why don't we wait for Chief Goodell to explain that?
Also state requirements, that the vehicles have to be, have.
X amount plus you have to.
Equipment on it, you know, it's just like the helicopter had to have one, you know? Everybody call, so.
Well, if, if the state requires this, then maybe the state should be giving us grants or something like that.
See, that's, that's what you're going to find out about the state of California. They'll mandate things, but they will not give you any money, but they will tell you to do it or we're going to take money away. Yeah, that's what it comes down to.
If it's a matter of compliance, we have to do it. My question is going to be how much do they cost? Like any purchase, we ask for details, invoices and the backup documents, pardon?
Did they get three bids?
I do not know the answer, so why don't we wait for Chief Goodell and move on to P D.
Chief, let me interrupt.
Go ahead.
So this is the original goals for the police department where they started it with.
Is the mic on?
This is.
It seems like, it seems so.
So this is the priorities list for the. So this is the priorities list for the police department. They started with requesting an IT person with an ongoing charge of forty-five thousand a year. Updating radios, a one-time charge of two hundred and fifty thousand. Updating their dispatch console for a hundred and fifty thousand at one time. License plate recognition, it's an ongoing charge of twenty thousand per year. Air conditioning units was one time at twenty-eight thousand. Emergency preparedness radios, one time at four thousand. Office upgrade, one time at twenty. Updating their door locks, one time at fifteen thousand. Updating their interview room at one time of fifteen thousand. Helmets, one time of fifteen thousand. Evidence freezer, one time of eighteen thousand and new vehicles of one time of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. When I spoke with Chief Hurtado, he mentioned that this is in the order that they are seeking their priorities. So with that said, we were looking to kind of get more information on the, on the, the, the current goals that are presented on that slide. Um, but it's up for discussion. So Chief, I will let you explain.
Sure. Uh, so what we've been doing since this, uh, version's gone out is we're kind of fine tuned what we're going to need, what is required by state law for us to, uh, perform our, our job. And what is, uh, stuff that we can, uh, do without. And, uh, my apologies, I have a list, uh, where we've gone to staff and tried to pick out a priority where what do we absolutely, if there's one thing we needed to get today to do our job, what would that be? If we can afford two things, what would those two things be? And so as we heavily discussed with staff for the last couple of days, I do have a, a new, uh, list I'd like to, to pass out. And it's, it's not going to, my apologies, doesn't match what, what's, uh, presented tonight. But if, Mayor, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
I'm still going to ask a lot of questions, Eric.
Adam Clark is tied up doing the agenda for the upcoming council meeting. So that's why she is not here.
And I'll leave some extra copies. Sure.
There we go.
All right. So what you have is a list that, uh, staff and I have gone over the last, like I said, the last few days. And there are things that, uh, we understood that we would need to get in the next few years that we understand, for instance, FCC requirements to go digital. Uh, that's been pushed back. So we set this in a priority and also we included a fiscal year where we believe we would need it. Uh, that way we don't have large expenses upfront. Uh, we can phase these in as we, uh, believe we can afford it. And, uh, have more of a, a cross-line, a straight budget. And as we get more, uh, personnel, those capital expenses will be decreased o- over time. So the first one is a one-time setup of our, uh, current interview and interrogation room. And it's been there for, uh, over ten years. The technology is a little old. Uh, we now have problems with, uh, the courts, DAs and defense wanting, uh, copies in different formats and it's getting ready to crash. Uh, it's nice to have a, a cassette recorder on the desk in front of you. Uh, it's now digital and now everyone expects live or a, a video with audio. And, uh, our detectives are, are challenged right now to make sure that we have the capability of filing a good case with a good video. Especially, uh, cases where, uh, they will give good information and that information's going to be needed to, to satisfy a case. So if there was one thing we needed is to update our, uh, our camera system in that room. Second one is helmets. We have acquired, uh, dermal helmets in the past. Uh, we've purchased a few. I have not been under fire until I've come to California City. And the rounds buzzing past your head. For those of you don't know, nineteen ninety-three and October of last year have been, uh, our personnel have been challenged with being fired upon. We've gone out, as everyone knows, of active shooter situations that are plaguing our society right now. And we've gone out and got our officers, uh, the vests to go over their, their soft body armor to help stop, uh, rifle rounds. Right now we don't have enough helmets or helmets do, we do have are old. So if we can afford two things, that'd be the, the second priority. The next one is the, uh, evidence refrigerator and freezer. One thing that was just starting in nineteen ninety-three when the building, the existing police department was built. Uh, we had a good facility, but DNA as it's, uh, evolved in, in the cases, we've had to hold on to, uh, evidence for a long time. And we keep buying freezers, refrigerators to, to store this because there's requirements by law for us to hold and retain this. Uh, we're at our capacity and our, uh, evidence technician is, uh, needs a, a long-term storage room. Uh, this is something that, uh, we can convert a small office that we have at our station to be sort of a walk-in freezer, uh, refrigerator to hold the, the DNA.
Uh, yeah, I did. Uh, how big is the containers that you have now for your, your DNA evidence? Are, are you looking like a regular household?
Whatever Ace has on special or we can get a Sears.
All right. Well, because the reason why I'm asking is I was, uh, when I was looking at this earlier, going over it, uh, there's a company that's, uh, you can get one for, and it comes in pieces. You put it together. You can have it together in fifteen minutes and it's a walk-in. And, uh, they're about ten with, with adding the, the shipping and the taxes and what have you. It comes out to about ten thousand dollars. That's, that was the, the most expensive one I found. So I don't know where you got the eighteen from.
Yeah, uh, our evidence, uh, Ryan had gone out and over last year, knew that this is going to be a, an issue for us. And started getting pricing for a long-term storage. And we've come up with a solution for, uh, one of the rooms that we're not using that we can build out similar to what you described.
Whole unit comes in there so you don't lose a room. Uh, you put it together.
Yeah, a compartment.
Walk-in. And I think.
I can, I can get with you out offline and find out about the ten thousand dollar one, but.
That way you're not losing a room.
Sure.
I've also seen numerous walk-in boxes from, uh, DRMO, you know, over the past that, uh, I know I've purchased one or two, but they're complete refrigeration freezer units that, uh, of course, to put them inside the building might be tough.
Yeah.
It's, uh, there's stuff out there, you know, when I saw the eighteen thousand dollar price, uh, I'd like to see a breakdown on it because
Sure.
I think we can possibly.
That include, uh, I believe the, the delivery and I, I believe it's most of our staff being able to assemble it.
Yeah, it takes two people fifteen minutes.
Yeah. So I can, we, we can, we can share, uh, your source out on the side and, and see if we can get a better, better deal. So the, the, we've talked about, uh, uh, military surplus. Uh, the challenge what we would have would be challenged in court that, uh, devils be contaminated from prior use.
I see, yeah.
So that's, that's why we're.
Yeah, okay.
Buy new, that way we don't lose some of the cases under a challenge. Uh, our number four in, in priority is new vehicles. Um, we have several that are, are being decommissioned right now. Uh, we have, uh, fourteen fleet vehicles. Uh, six of them have spent probably at least two months out of service. We've had one, uh, two thousand fifteen Ford. How long?
Yeah.
Two and a half months. Trying to, uh, repair a warranty item. That's why we're going to Chevy. So what we've done is we've, uh, analyzed the, the annual mileage that we, we use. Uh, what vehicles will be phased out over the next five years. Uh, we have a five-year, uh, replacement plan so that, uh, we, we aren't in this position again. Yeah. And we have vehicles that can get us from point A to point B, uh, without getting broke down and have me towed back to, uh, to garage or the station. We haven't purchased a vehicle in, in a while. Our, our current ones are two thousand seventeens. Do that, we have two th- four two thousand seventeen Chevy Tahos. Uh, the ones before that are two thousand fourteens. Uh, we've, like I said, we, we've gone through the mileage and how much we have to, to drive. And, uh, many of the Crown Vics, uh, they're good. But they haven't made them since two thousand eleven. Uh, several of them, we've, we've replaced the engines, the trannies, rear ends. They're being duct taped and baling wire trying to hold them together, uh, until we can get some vehicles that we can do more than fifty-five if we have to chase somebody. So we're looking at, uh, uh, on our five-year plan is to catch up on, uh, vehicle replacement. And that'd be the first year to lease, uh, six, uh, police vehicles. And on your breakdown under cost is the breakdown from the current fiscal year all the way out to the five-year and on a lease option, how much that would cost. And by the end of five years, uh, I don't think any of the Crown Vics would last, but I think with the next year, uh, we'll be phasing out most, if not all, the Crown Victories.
Hey Chief, um, so this is over five years is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, after we leased them, what is the purchase price?
One dollar.
Okay. So, um, so it costs us four hundred and twenty...
But we can.
Like four hundred and thirty-one or thirty-two thousand.
But we can buy them outright for three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Six, based on sixty-two thousand.
Right, sixty-two, that includes.
Which covers everything, which includes all the equipment, the radios, the markings. All of that.
A turnkey.
In God we trust.
I don't know. That has to be brought up to council on that. Um, but that would give us, that would give us six brand-new ones outright. No financing.
Yeah. On a side note on that, uh, we just got notified from, uh, Chevy Fleet that we have a small window. Uh, for those that don't know, the Chevy Tahoe is going to have a, a redo. Uh, the two thousand nineteen, is the last one? I think two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty is the last one. And there's going to be a dark period and Chevy's coming out with a, a different style. So there's going to be about nine months to a year that we, we may not, uh, we'll have a, a darker, uh, period where we can't get, uh, any police pursuit vehicles from, from Chevy because they're changing the style.
Yeah. My, my suggestion to you though is, is look at, um, lease versus purchasing. And the thing is, since we have measure C right now, the prudent thing to do would probably be to go and buy these, just like the fire department is buying an engine. Uh, maybe to go and buy these and put it over four years. And so they're all purchased before measure C runs out. Because if we don't do our job up here, there will be no measure D. So we need to be able to get those items for you within the next four years.
I have a question. Um, your last sentence and, and number four says finally, the cost of maintenance uh, far outweighs the operational cost of new vehicles. How much maintenance do you guys spend a year?
Right now, a lot. Uh, between having the cars towed back, um.
A hundred and twenty-one, twenty-eight thousand?
Our, uh, two fifty-three.
Ninety-five thousand. That, does that include towing? Thank you.
Question Chief, um.
Sir.
Sixty-two thousand a vehicle, what's, what does a vehicle cost without getting the, getting it outfitted?
About thirty-nine thousand. Now, the rest is, uh, like the mayor said, we've been trying, in the past, there, there seem to be a standard issue light bar, uh, cages. We're, we're challenged with, they don't make the parts for these light bars anymore. They're not really interchangeable. Uh, so we have to go out and buy new light bars because no one, no one services them anymore. So all that equipment, the cage, uh, the security features, um, everything inside that car. So the turnkey is about sixty-two thousand.
And, and these four-wheel drives?
Yes.
Do you suppose you could bring us a, a list of, of alternative vehicle, uh, models that, that could be used for patrol? Besides the, besides the Tahoe?
Sure. Uh, I can bring you that. I can also bring you some, uh, some research on how those vehicles have, have done. Uh, one of the big challenges we have in California City is the desert. Uh, once we get off the few paved roads we do have, uh, some of the two-wheel drive vehicles, I'll put it this way, all, all our vehicles have tow straps to get each other out. Once we get off that roadway and, and we've had a little rain, um, so we can pull each other out, those that don't have four-wheel drive.
I'm not questioning four-wheel drive. I'm just saying, what are the other, what are the different manufacturers and, 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 uh, models that are being used now for patrol?
In, uh, in Los Angeles and in, I'm looking for the mayor on this one. There's another city in the, the country that hosts, come out and, and drive these, uh, patrol cars to see which, which one holds up. There's, there's two cities that have it. Uh, LA County has it. And so what we do is we read the reports, what's good, what's bad. Um, and we try to look at our situation out here. I know that, uh, Ford has had some challenges. Um, they had the police interceptor explorer package that, uh, a popular state, uh, agency had for a long time. Uh, they, they had some problems. Then they went to Dodge and then they realized that they can't fit all their equipment in the trunks. And I, I believe they're going to change again. Uh, the thing about the officers out here is we carry all our gear with us. Uh, there was a, a question, Mr. Stump, about, um, some equipment from fire. I'll give you a for instance, yesterday. Uh, we had a situation out at Shell Station where our officer was investigating a, a fight. Uh, somebody was threatening to kill somebody. Our new lieutenant went out there, uh, to resolve the situation. While he was there, uh, shots were fired. Uh, don't know where they came from. Uh, we immediately deployed all our officers that we had. Uh, we have several shields. I just so happened to be driving, uh, a black and white police car uh, because wanted extra visibility with the school. So I had brought one of the two shields into the trunk of the car. So when I got there, we had some cover. Uh, we're able to approach, uh, the, our suspect. And. We have certain equipment that, yes, it may be a little pricey, but we wanna not just have it stored at the police station. But maybe have some of this gear spread out to to different vehicles, so in case we do need it, we're not scrambling around. Totally off-topic, but that's about cars.
Was he arrested?
Yes.
He lost. Did he have a gun?
Uh, we.
Heads are shaking behind you, Chief.
He was taken to custody and uh charged with some felonies.
Outstanding. And that's all we're gonna say.
That's it for now.
So you're getting back, uh, so your cars, your helmets, so is this in priority, interview room, helmets?
Absolutely.
And then cars?
Yes.
Um. You know, since I live right across the street from you, I see a lot of vehicles in that back lot there. Do we have a complete inventory of everything that's there?
Yes, I can get you a complete inventory, uh, we have mileage. Uh, I I know uh Mayor Pro Tim had a a fine Ford Crown Victoria, uh, as.
That he donated to the police department, that one?
No, no, not, not that one.
Oh, that's the one that, never mind. That's the one he sold.
But as as many of you may know, uh, two hundred thousand dollar, or two hundred thousand miles on a police vehicle is not two hundred thousand miles.
Three fifty to four.
Exactly, because uh the time that the officer's at a traffic stop, traffic accident out in front of an incident, that car is running. So it's it's more like the mayor said, three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand hard miles on the on that car. Even though the odometer may just say two hundred thousand. And many of them right now are, we're trying to get to two hundred thousand, I don't think some of them will make it that far.
When it first came on, the the vehicles were ran out at seventy-five thousand. And then they, uh, and then it went up to uh ninety-five, I think it was, and then they fin- finally cleared the century mark. Yeah, but that was on horseback, come on. Horses can only go so far. Yeah, but it looks really good with the amber on the on the tail of the horse, you know. I was there, remember?
Uh, on the next page, uh, we. We have some challenges on computers, because we're a government agency, we are a target of hackers, uh malware. I'll I'll just say we're we're frequently attacked, uh, just like every other government agency. What I don't wanna do is have to notify the hundred and thirty thousand people that we have in our database to let them know that there's been a data breach. Uh, and their information's been compromised. We need to stay on top of uh all the new patches, uh, all the. New software out there to to prevent all these new hacks. We've looked and reviewed uh our IT support in the past, we believe that we can uh. Change some things, so we do it smarter, we do it cheaper. We're we're fortunate to have uh people in the community that can say, I'll come in and look at your, your, your setup. This is what you need to replace. Instead of uh having to to worry about some markup of a a third party. Uh, so if it's, for instance, those that that weren't aware our nine-one-one system went down, ends up being a a UPS that was failing. We ordered ourselves, we saved a lot of money and got it replaced, so the time it it costs to uh. Figure out what the, what the problem was. We put down forty-five thousand, that's that's the most. Uh, we think we'll be well under that, because we're ordering what we can. Uh, in the, in the past, if you wanted to add a a printer, uh, we had to. Be charged a a rate so that driver information can be installed into our our system. And. We're, we're looking at doing things cheaper now. And so that that forty-five thousand is is the high end.
That, does that include benefit, if you were to do a, I think it's, I'm misunderstanding it on two spectrums, it's much more than we spend for our contract for the city. And then, um, if you, it was a new hire.
Oh, no, 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 it's not a new.
It says new hire, it says or new hire.
Right, so in the, in the past.
Get benefits wrapped in there?
No, so this is for uh if we would would contract out. So this, this isn't our our city's IT, we're we're hopefully will get a city's IT, someone willing to come and and work uh for the whole city. But this is just for a a contract, for just what we believe we're gonna need to to make sure our police system is safe.
Chief, just a contract for one IT person just for the police department?
Uh, that would be at uh. Up to last month, we were. Um, paying for eight hours a week. We think we can be much lower than that, because the things are not failing as much as they used to, so we think we'll be way under that.
Chief, uh. Aren't these IT people supposed to be specifically certified? To enter the police department, it's just not a standard IT guy can come in and do the work. Uh, doesn't the state have requirements or the feds that say, you know, they have to have certain certificates and certified just to enter?
Absolutely.
Work on them, so uh. That was my understanding, is finding somebody that is certified to do all of this.
Yes, so the.
Is different from a regular IT person.
The, we'll just say that the two uh companies that have uh service uh IT support have both passed DOJ audits, uh, the requirements. We just had a DOJ audit three days ago, all the paperwork is in order, there was some. Additional hardware we needed for some of the computers, that was discussed with the the city manager this week. But all the people that work on our system uh have to go through a certain amount of training and testing, the certification. Uh, we even reached out to, I don't remember which company it is, but it's Geek Squad, to say, hey, can you work on our system? And they wouldn't even, uh, 'cause I know somebody would say, why don't you just, I know how to install a printer, I know how to install a monitor, it's much more complicated than that.
Okay.
Uh, the next item, um. License plate uh recognition system. When this first started, ten, I'm looking at, mayor, ten years ago, fifteen years ago?
I'll say, yeah, about then.
Okay. Uh, it was very pricey, uh, about twelve to fifteen thousand for a car that.
Per, per uh.
Per unit?
Per camera. Yeah, I think it was per camera.
Uh, when everybody was was using these and going to these, the the vendors were telling us, don't buy it now, because the technology will. You'll get some uh off-the-shelf uh cameras, prices are gonna go down, technology will be cheaper, and just wait a little bit. Now, it's down to two thousand a camera. And that includes uh all the IT support, connection. Everything for uh two thousand a year, for for each camera. So we identified, um, if we got ten units, it'd be about twenty thousand dollars uh for this system. And the quick Reader's Digest version of what, how these cameras can can go and be of use of California City. Uh, we've had uh some major crimes that have occurred, we're we're able to get some license plates. And we can go back and say, has this license plate passed by one of the cameras? And be able to track uh where the the vehicles are at. And help us uh solve these crimes more quickly and and solve these cases. We've reached out, uh, the mayor and I have had two or three teleconferences with some vendors.
We, we had a couple.
Yeah, uh, trying to to find the the right fit for the city. I think we have a another one that we're trying to set up. But right now, the the lowest, and we believe the most effective, and and. Uh, one would be the one that's cost about two thousand per unit per year. Any questions on that one?
They used, they used them, the patrols got some on their cars, on their patrol cars. And they've gone into uh hot calls, like robberies and things like that. And they've been traveling seventy, eighty, ninety, a hundred miles an hour going in there when the suspect vehicle went by, they get a description, and all of a sudden, it lights up on their, on their.
MDT's, yeah.
Yeah, the MDT's, that, uh, there it is. And so after they had already passed, so it's, yeah, those, those are, those would help out tremendously.
Uh, just a a few more I'll go over, uh, real briefly, we've been approached by other, uh, another city, actually, a few other cities that asked if. Uh, they can contract with us, uh, instead of uh county service. County service for uh animal drop-offs are on the on the pricey end, and they've asked if we could beat it. Uh, the only issue would be uh the types of animals we would receive, and the need for expanding uh the existing facility. So over the next. Just to put a a a number, a place marker, this is, I I just put a hundred fifty, and I haven't had time to really fine-tune that amount. Uh, if something we can do to enclose the existing shelter uh outside kennels, if we need to add on, um, that's just. I haven't had time to work on this project, but I just wanted to to put that out there, that this is something that we may come to you uh sometime in the future. And so there's, it's no surprise, and see if it's uh cost-effective and a way for the city to uh recoup some of the cost. Of our animal control program by uh receiving money from other cities. Dispatch consoles. Been there for quite some time, uh, they actually don't uh fully function. Those of you that may have seen desks that that raise or lower, depending on how tall you are, and uh. That feature doesn't work. And we've gone through uh our data that we've received on our call volume. And at, we are at that point where we need to expand our dispatch center. Most of the time, we have only one dispatcher, peak times, we have two, and with the latest figures, uh, at some of the peak times, we need three. Uh, or else some of those calls, we're gonna go unanswered or put on hold for a long time. Our staff has been getting quotes for, from the last few months. Uh, we have vendor coming in this week to get us another quote, again, this is a placeholder, uh, about a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, we heard that this may be down to about ninety thousand, just depending on what uh this third vendor may come up with, but that was, again, a placeholder.
So is this, was this going to uh. Cover the replacement of the um. The, the, the console itself?
Console, yeah. Not the electronics.
No, not the electronic, because we just replaced that a couple of years back.
So this is actual workstations, I I was surprised at. What the requirements are for nine-one-one workstations. Like I said, some were a little more costly than than others, and we'll work with. The vendors are, more importantly, our dispatchers, to make sure that uh they would get something that they can use and and be comfortable for that long twelve hours.
Probably wanna get offline with your sidebar it, um, on this, 'cause I'm.
Uh, one of the projects that uh was up there before, that. We're trying to get a a definite date is our update on radios. If you remember. Uh, at least most of you in this room would remember the time when he had the um. Bunny ears on your uh television set to get the reception, that's an old a analog system. And at some point, they had a soft cutoff date where TV stations uh would have to go and transmit digital, so you had to get the converter box or go to one of the. Satellite or cable stations. And at one point, those rabbit ears don't work. Uh, same thing with emergency radios, uh, police, fire, there's been a lot of discussion in the county, trying to figure out when the cutoff date is, when we all have to convert. To a total digital system, and that's to allow more radio stuff to go through the the airwaves and not interfere uh with each other. So this is a a cost that we'll see later on down the road, uh, maybe the end of the five years. But we're we're pretty safe right now, so nothing, probably the next two or three years, but something we'll have to plan, and it's gonna be in our five-year plan.
You say um one-time costs, and then, but also you say financing over three years.
Sure, it, so we have about a. Three and a half, four percent interest rate on municipal financing, right? So if we went ahead and and purchased everything, it'd be about two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, or if we uh did the uh lease financing, it'd be about fifty-three. And this, like I said, we've, we've got a committee that we're putting together, because this is gonna be uh an issue not just in California City, it's. FCC is gonna be pushing this uh down our throats, so.
Started a few years back.
Uh, our air conditioning system for the next project in priority. We have units that are up on the roof that are, um. Make sure I get Dave plenty of time, sorry. Uh, been there for uh almost thirty years, uh, and we wanna make sure that. There's two of them that have failed, uh, we're able to do without. Uh, we've had a a few who've been successful in, you know, to, to give it a good kick and it'll start up again. But those units will reach a point where it's not very cost-effective to keep replacing them. And we believe that the cost in the long term, with the efficiency of a modern uh air uh HVAC unit, would save the city money. So we're, we need to put that on a, on a five-year plan.
How many, how many, how many units on your, on your roof?
Nine.
And. For the. How is the one, how is the one that is uh covering all the electrical equipment?
We have a redundant one, uh, we have one specifically for that room, and then we have a duct that will will feed into there, and with a couple of fans, we can keep it. At a reasonable temperature if the one fails, um, it it's okay right now.
Chief, um, quite a, quite a range from eighteen to twenty-eight thousand for the, for the two units. How many, how many quotes did we get on these?
So far, three.
Local folks as well?
Uh, we've had Excel. EMCOR and Reliable. Excel, EMCOR and Reliable?
About ASAP.
Not yet. Yeah, it's, like I said, we've, we've got a lot on our plate, and there's, there's stuff that we haven't had time to.
Because my question on on these right here, you, I don't think anybody's taking into consideration, you're gonna need a crane.
Yes.
It is fa- and. Okay. Okay.
Set them with a helicopter though, so.
If you're flying, I'm sure we can do it. Uh, just a couple more, the air emergency preparedness radios. It's kind of a low ticket item, but I think it's important and something that we, uh, probably need to, to look at. In the last month, we've had some issues with, uh, the ground, not wanting to stay put in our area. And we've, um, part of our disaster preparedness plan is to, to integrate a communication plan with, entities within our community that can, uh, be shelters. We need a backup plan, uh, in case phones don't work. And we're gonna need, um, better communication than what we have now. It's a little scratchy, uh, the radio system that we have. We've ran some, some tests on, uh, talking back and forth and we, we just need to get some radios that we can actually communicate in town with. Uh, that's a one time four thousand.
How many radios for four thousand?
That's ten.
Ten radios?
Ten.
When am I gonna get my radio back?
Soon as we get it rezapped. Software update.
I'm sure you have others that you can provide me with.
Radios are scarce right now. We'll, we'll get them out to you.
Seeing that I'm on the law enforcement committee for the city council, I would like you to make that a priority.
Copy. Uh, building updates, uh, I don't know what's older, the carpet in this room or the carpet at the PD?
Here.
This room, this room's got you beat.
Fair.
About a week.
It's like comparing ages between, uh, Don and Al.
Thank you.
Not you, Trumble. I'm talking Trumble. Guilty.
So the carpet, um, at some point, we need to look at it in the next five years, so that's, that's not a necessity. It's just out there that, yeah, we need to look at it. Uh, the last thing is, uh, update locks that integrate into who entered what office or what door at what time. Just, same thing with the court system, they wanna know, uh, who's coming into what room. If there's certain evidence her, uh, held in one room, always need a, a better way to track it other than a, a, a paper log. And there's, uh, technologies out there that you can use, uh, uh, access card to, to enter rooms. And this is for the, the outer perimeter and, and special rooms in the building.
Chief, I, I just, uh, redid all my, uh, security at my school, my home, and we're gonna do it at the church. Titanium says that, uh, they have a system that, uh, has sixty-five or a hundred and twenty access codes to where if they go in, if they open the door or they have to push their access code to go in. And they have up to a hundred and twenty people, uh, just to enter. You know, we were gonna do that for the church because we had so many people coming in. So that way you would know exactly who entered that room unless he gives his access code away to somebody else. And it was, uh, a very low amount, uh, for that rather than, uh, key cards. It, it seemed just pretty amazing that their technology is up to where, uh, everybody on your department would have an access code to enter that certain room. And that would tell you exactly who, when, where and why, you know, it gives you the time, date and who entered it.
Right, uh, if you look at this building, there's, uh, a few entrances, um, that would have to be, um, key carded and be able to track as far as, uh, access. There's restricted access points within restricted access points, uh, in the police facility. And not everybody has access to every room, so it's just, uh, something that, yes, we need at some point, but it's not a priority. So, uh, mayor, council and staff, that's my presentation as far as, uh, if you had a list of what I needed for this year, uh, a timeframe.
I have a question, my, one of my concerns is, this is maxed out at one seventy, two fifty. At the, at, considering with the reduction, I'm, of, um, the tax possibly coming. That's about an eighteen percent difference if it were to go to one fifty-three next year. Can you, is this maxed out at one seventy, two fifty, or what you're expecting it?
No, ju- just for, for the benefit of council and staff, it, it, this is just my priority list for tonight. I have, um, a different one that shows the numbers, uh, these are just the projects that.
You want?
Yeah.
In need of. Okay, thank you.
I can do that other one if you want, but I think Fire Chief wants to talk sometime tonight.
Talked earlier, but he was gone. Does anybody have any questions up here?
I'm good.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Shareholders in protecting our community. First of all, I wanted to say, um, thanks a whole bunch to everybody in this room and everybody who's watching, California city constituents. Thanks for all the stuff that you've approved for the fire department. Measure C passed, that was really, really neat. We all worked hard to, to make that pass. We got a generous, uh, pay raise package. Help us, uh, um, acquire and retain staffing. Very, very good stuff for the city. Looks like we're pushing hard toward maintaining four O staffing. That's really great, really, really great, and I'm being very, very sincere, this isn't a setup for anything. Thanks for the fire. That's really, really important stuff, thank you for our breathing apparatus. Fire department's grateful for, um, for what we have all worked together to get. And, um, I think with that in mind, that we're all cooperating, collaborating toward making this community a better place, safer place, but be fiscally prudent while we're at it. Here goes. I have three capital expenditures, or we have three capital expenditures that we feel are pretty critical. Remembering, uh, what I just said, we're real thankful for what we've got. And, uh, we can provide a good brand of protection because of you guys standing behind us and because of our citizens standing behind us. And from the guys that work with me and for me. We would like, we are recommending four cardiac monitors. Cost, four times thirty-eight thousand bucks is a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Had a wordsmith write this for me, so I'm gonna go line by line, break every speech rule in the world and never look up. It pretty much just makes sure that, uh, we replace the stuff that's breaking down pretty rapidly. Going out of certification almost as we speak. And, uh, there's a lot better stuff out there now that will allow us, you know, this is pretty bottom line and pretty dramatic, but save lives better, faster and safer for us. If we don't get that, then we've kinda missed why we want cardiac monitors. So this is how it kinda does that. The recommended monitors, four of them, are compatible with, interoperable with, more readily interface with ambulance and other cooperating agencies. So perish the thought, I go down, you guys are doing a real good job at, at getting me back. And we make the transition to the ambulance, be it an air ambulance or a ground transportation. You get to switch from all the compatible monitors, et cetera. And you, you guys have seen how mu- how much electrical stuff goes on there. And we have to switch over. I don't know about you, but I'm, the older I get, the less I care about myself. But I really don't, really want that happening to, to my loved ones, which includes the people I serve in this city. I prefer a pretty smooth transfer, have the, have the, the, the monitor read what it's supposed to do, the P waves, the B waves, whatever waves. The experts know how to read so that they do the right things, prescribe the right drugs, introduce the same and improve the outcome of the patients. And, and I think that's why we're all here, is to make that happen. We're doing fine with what we have. Why lie about it? But it will improve the level of care to the people that we serve out there. And we probably all, we've all camped on this just a little bit, but the, the price to maintain the old stuff is beginning to rapidly catch up to the price it takes to replace the stuff. My dad used to call that nickel and diming you to death. So, um, if that resonates with you, it certainly resonates with me. The new monitors are user friendly, lighter, ergonomically, wordsmith, designed to reduce lifting and toting injuries. Current monitors will be out of compliance and decertified during this fiscal year nineteen twenty. I don't like the liability stuff. I go out and fix people because I want them to live. You know, if I'm, if I'm liable, uh, be- for that or somebody perceives that, that's tough luck. I'm gonna go out there and do the best I can for them. I don't particularly wanna adopt the liability, I think that's important. By us bringing on these, these new monitors, keeping them within certification, we will be improving the brand of care that we give, which pretty much, um, goes a long ways toward neutralizing or taking away the liability issues, but it's certainly a consideration. Not my primary one, but certainly way up there on my list. So, um, staff vehicles, talked a little bit about that. You're talking to, or you're listening to, and thanks for being polite, because I know we're all tired. The, the stunt man who crashed into the sand canyon dead end, uh, while fooling around with trying to improve, uh, care for the troops that I had here at the scene. So my little vehicle is got a hundred and eighty thousand on it. A hundred and eighty plus, hang on just one second, while, while you think about that. It's got a lot of miles on it. I don't drive it real fast, real often, because that's not legal. But I do like to get to my incidents quickly because that's where I need to be, not because I'm really, really smart, but because I have an extra set of eyes and I care about the guys that are on the ground, taking care of the people out there. So if I happen to crack eighty-two miles an hour, don't tell anybody, especially ex policemen, that might happen. Or right now, um, it's so bad that Beverly didn't even wanna ride with me at sixty-five. And I'm real good with, I'm real good with a pickup, uh, halfway comfortable, standard shift, a place to put my stuff, a radio or two, some lights and a siren would be really, really neat. That would be, that would be just fine, I don't, I don't need, uh, a BMW truck or anything like that. But, but we need them, if it, if it doesn't, if, if this budget won't accommodate it, accommodate that. Or the monitors that I just asked for, we are thankful for what we have.
Chief, if I could just got one question, um, actually I got a couple, but that's okay. On staff vehicles, um, I could see getting a chief vehicle. But what's the status on our patrol? Because the last time I was at the station, and this is when, uh, the seagrave was still there. And I walked into, uh, the bay. And I'm looking down and there's big trays underneath both vehicles filled with absorbol and stuff and fluids dripping and leaking.
And Chuck, i- if we're not on the same page, then, then we probably shouldn't have worked so well together for so long. Yeah, you can, I'll, I'll drive a skateboard to work before I let one of those die. And it's been fixed.
It has been.
Yeah, and, and what we did is, is way, way proactive, uh, scary thought. And that is, uh, we, we went down, it had a kinda just a minor leak. We went a little bit deeper and found out that it was while we had, you had to pull everything off those things practically now. But while we had the, the front end, you know, the grill and all that junk off, we put in a water pump. So it cost us, uh, two thousand seven hundred, two thousand seventeen dollars and forty-one cents.
And that was on the patrol?
On the patrol. And the seagrave has had kinda the same stuff done with it, and that was, that was just like gasket stuff. So we kinda looked at, we lucked out on that. And the ALF, the American La France, seems to be putting pretty good, pretty good. So all those, the leaks that you saw, and, and understand too that no matter how, this, this kind of an inside deal, no matter how well you do on that pump packing, it's always gonna leak. And you want it to leak.
Yes.
Yeah, if it's too tight.
It gets.
And it doesn't work anymore. So, and, and you had another question?
Well, just, uh, what would be the, what would be, uh, you were saying two staff vehicles? Yours?
And Jeremy's, the fire marshals.
How many miles are on that one? Ballpark.
I think one forty-ish. And I can get that more precise information to you. And, and we may be tracking along the same lines. Yes, 'cause both of us are on call twenty-four seven, okay? I do, I do two thirds of the duty, A and C, he's got B shift. And so, um, yeah, I mean, I, we carry our pager with us and we've ac- we've come out several times to do what we're supposed to do. And finally, um, the rescue tool. It's thirty-five hundred bucks, uh, it's compatible with the tools that we have now. It's, it would be the, the only one that wouldn't be, and.
Thousand.
My, that's, that's a mistake, that's mine, and I'm sorry. And we, that, that's totally on me, not Anna, not Diego.
Thirty-five hundred. It's thirty-four, I'm, I'm looking at thirty-four on, on, on my, uh, computer, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, and I mean, we all doing a lot of stuff, so sometimes.
You're saying thirty-four hundred, not twenty-four thousand?
Yeah, thirty, yeah, the rescue tool, um.
Which tool is it?
It's a whole macho. It's about spreaders and the, the, the spitters, the, uh, the cutters, the ram, instead of being like that big and weighing lots.
Sixty pounds plus, I think it was?
Not much, Chuck, I mean, I can, I can get it around pretty good, and, and the power plant, now in the old days.
Yeah.
You know, the power plant is, is transportable, um, real, real dependable and, and, uh, and way more powerful. And that does a couple of things, and you guys, everybody here knows that, it just, if we gotta swap out a part, we have a compatible tool in, 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 in parts and stuff, so we can plug in, put stuff where it needs to be, make quicker repairs, get out there and do the hero work. And, uh, another thing it does, and this is, uh, one of those difficult to quantify's, and I think that's why I like it so much, is, uh, and I think that's why I like it so much, is, uh, is standardized training. You know, if I'm training, I, I don't particularly want to be on the pit crew that's trained to do a Ford and you pull a Mopar or a Chevy in. I know what a lug wrench is, I know what a torque wrench is, I know what a ratchet is. But I also know that Fords and Chevys and Mopars are different. Well, if I'm working, if I'm drilling with Hallmatros, and say we have an ugly one, and we have to use two tools or three tools. And, and one of them's a Hurst and, and, uh, you know, another one's a Hallmatro and, and another one's an Angus or, you know, that just, yes, we, a, a pump is a pump, hose is hose, water is water. But, but by us being trained around the same tool, it's the difference between getting a person out in eleven minutes, if we're really trained around the same tool, and fifteen minutes. Not a big deal, four minutes.
It's a call, and call it.
It's a big deal. You're starting to encroach on somebody's golden hour. That's, that's not good. That's all I got.
Any questions?
Yes, four cardiac monitors, uh, where did they all go?
The squad, the, both engines and then the type-three engine.
Required on each vehicle, correct?
Yes. Well, and Dawn, I mean, just a real quick likelihood of it happening, sort of slim. But, strike team, off it goes. Cause it's gotta be fully equipped when it goes.
Right.
And the type-six, well, need I say the same one? We ju- we gotta have that little bit of redundancy.
That's what we were discussing while you were gone, is, you know, they're required by state to be on each vehicle, right?
Yes, sir.
Two thousand dollars for a water pump? Are you talking about the engine water pump or the, the pump, the?
The little, just the radiator water pump, the little.
Two thousand dollars? Wow.
Well, cause you gotta take off a bunch of stuff off the vehicle.
I understand, and it's, uh.
That's where we're.
We were discussing, you know.
Dawn, I need to confess something to you. That, that was an, I trust you. It was, that was an estimate. I know it was, it was, it bumped it up a pretty strong thousand to, to do that extra. Cause we are already in there doing stuff. I remember Rob coming to me, who does our mechanic stuff, and he, he was great at it. And he goes, Dave, he said, we gotta pull the part apart. He goes, here's, here's this figure, it's this much more with a water pump. And I go.
You already got it down, you needed it. My whole thing is Public Works, you know, our, we had that discussion.
And I, in that, you know, since we've had that discussion, I've had that discussion within my mind. And I'm, I think what I will do, and I will do, I don't think I will do it, I will do it. I'm, I'm gonna go talk, uh, nose around some mechanics who are fire engine mechanics and find out, find out where, where we can go, you know, safely, get it done correctly and be within certification. And then, who we have to take to a, to a fire department mechanic.
Get one of our guys certified.
Right on.
They've been here twenty years, twenty-four years. You know, they've been working on all our stuff, and yet they can't work on a fire truck, because they're not fire certified.
Certified.
You know, and that's, uh.
Welcome to the state of California.
Well, no, I agree, but I think we could, we could certify one of our guys.
Well, it, it makes sense, it makes sense monetarily and more importantly, we get the thing back on the road more quickly.
Well, that's it, we're so far away.
Right.
You know, and we had a hydraulic line, you know, or an airline. I mean, we could've had that thing back in service, you know, in ten minutes. And it took, oh, five days, six days to get the guy out.
Free. And it always happens at two in the morning on a Sunday.
Over a weekend, yeah. No, I understand that, it's just things we can.
I agree.
Look into that.
And what, what you tell me, I catalog.
It's just.
And I'll look into it.
More saving time and saving lives. It's not the money issue, it's the fact that we're so far away from help that if we had somebody here, it would just, you know, it saves lives.
Well, and remember, that was the drawing card when we did the pump. Cause the pump, we, we contract with Kern, they just pull, they just, instead of going that way to, to Boron, they just come through this way, stop, do, take care of our stuff and go to Boron.
Right.
And, and when we need to get it's, it's certified, uh, uh, medium level maintenance, service, et cetera, we go to a certified place that knows how to work on pumps.
Oh, I understand, it's just, again, you know, it brings back and we can look into it.
I agree, yeah, and I will.
Any other questions?
Sir? Sir?
I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, what do we got left?
What do we have left? Eighty percent of the budget.
Well, no, I mean, not tonight. Public Works.
Public Works, okay.
Hello. So, I, I'm, I'm sure, uh, did you guys get my, like, five-year, uh, list, what we need in the next five years? That we know, kind of? That was in the package, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, in that package, the highlighted stuff, it didn't come out very well. The highlighted stuff is stuff that we are addressing as priority for this year. So, um, oh, i- it's a long list, and I'll, I'll simplify it by saying, uh, in the, on the production side, um, we have six wells, we have some different phases, which are water tanks. And I went there and just listed some of the priorities, which is some of the wells, our roofs, electrical equipment, pumps, things like that, that i- it appears they haven't been serviced for a while. And, um, what we, we find ourselves lately is, uh, we have pumps go out and then we have to get them rebuilt. And, um, you know, the, the, to rebuild a pump is about eight thousand dollars. So, we're trying to get ahead of the game and maintain things and take care of things, put roof on the building so that, you know, the water, when it rains, doesn't leak on the electrical components, things like that. And then, um, and what I did, I took the approach of going to the supervisor in every, uh, area under Public Works and just asking them what their priorities were, what their needs were. And then I, I narrowed, did that, narrowed that down based off conversation with them or what we could, I thought we could afford or we could do. So, that's what, on the production side, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at replacing pumps, um, electrical components, panels, roofs, things like that. And then, um, we go down to the, um, give me a second, I gotta put on my glasses. And the wastewater treatment plant. The prison had a consulting company come out and do an assessment on our wastewater treatment plant. And, um, what they came, what, what they came out with that was a, a list of repairs that are needed to bring it to a, a place where it, it, we're, we're not in fear that it's gonna break down. And, uh, maybe we can get back to being able to do one point five, um, million gallons of flow.
What's it doing now? What's it doing now?
We're, now we're at one million. That's what the state has kind of.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not the flow we're taking in, that's what we're certified to be. I think the inflows coming in, and there's an issue with the inflow coming in, cause when the water's not treated properly, this is my understanding of it, i- it goes back in and, and it gets reda- it gets retreated. So, it looks like what our inflows show is a lot less than what actually goes in the percolating ponds and things like that. And that's kinda what we've been addressing with the prison. We're trying to get that number actually down, so we know where we're at compared to where we wanna be. But either way, regardless of the flows, there, there's a lot of equipment that is about to break down and is in really bad shape over at the wastewater treatment plant. We have panels, we have, you know, obviously the panels have relays, uh, switches, equipment, things like that, that are just getting beat up by the sun, they're out in the elements. So, those things need to be repaired, they need to be replaced, maybe throw some, um, some cover over those, permanent cover. So, I, like I said, I don't know if the highlighting came out very well on your project, but we highlighted about, um, two million dollar worth of repair for the wastewater treatment plant that we'd like to do next year if possible. And, and that would just be a start. And if we can get these priorities done, we're also hoping to be, have conversations with the prison. They wanna expand the prison, and then they would help us, along, they would contribute some of, some money to the repairs as well and improvements and, and things like that for the wastewater treatment plant.
And I presume that also means an increase in capacity?
Yeah, that, that, what the repairs we're gonna do, we wanna bring up the capacity back to one point five.
Was it at one point five at one point?
It was at one point five, and then it was reduced. And, and I'm not sure about the particular why it was reduced. I'm not sure if it was something we wanted to do, to make it easier on ourselves or as far as getting certifications and meeting state requirements, or if it was something that the state put upon us. But I can do some research and look into it.
I think it was the state that, uh, stepped in on that, if I remember right.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's the state that stepped in.
And then we come to our street, our streets department. Um, I put on here the, the new, uh, road grader that we should be getting next month. That was already approved by council in March of this year. But I just wanted to show it, because that's, that'll be an ongoing expense for, I believe, five years. We also included a new loader, currently we only have one loader and it's, um, I wanna say at least fifteen years old. And then other things that, that the street department needs, speaking to the supervisor, a small trailer. The current grader we have right now needs the new lambs, those are about seventeen thousand dollars. And then some of the other stuff, it just, um, stuff that is bought every year to do repairs, the bulk asphalt, the, uh, street signs, things like that. Um, but I wanted to show them too, because it is a big expense. And I spoke with the garage supervisor, and, and then he was just adamant about, if I could get one thing, he'd like to get another mechanic. Uh, a lot of our vehicles are really, really old. He spends a lot of time repairing them, doing maintenance on them. And, um, it seems like he's overwhelmed and we're backed up with getting a lot of, a lot of our vehicles fixed. And then dial ride, when I spoke to the supervisor there, um, same thing, they just wanted one thing, they wanted two new buses. It, it turns out, I know, but it, it turns out that, um.
Sure. That's good.
I mean, about a month ago, we were down to like one and a half, cause we had two that were working, but one of them on the air conditioning didn't work in the back, so that makes it difficult in the summertime.
You know, Joe, the air quality control board for East Kern has been purchasing buses, uh, for Ridgecrest, Tehachp, uh, and, uh. What's that?
New electric buses?
Well, what, no, it's the, uh, they're replacing the buses that, uh, don't meet EPA standards now, you know, because of emissions. But we can, let me look into that. I believe we have funds available there that, uh.
We, we have, um, I have a staff report coming to council at the next council meeting on the thirteenth. And then we will, we, we have the grant funds available. So, I'll explain it in the, uh.
That's my question, this is reimbursable?
Uh, yes, correct. But I, I, once again, I just wanted to show it, to get an actual picture.
So, we're not actually putting it out. It, we'd put it out, but it would come back to us.
Correct. And then on the distribution side of water, um, we wanna ru- I, I didn't include the projects that were already approved by council in January two thousand eighteen for, uh, to replace existing main lines, since those were already approved. But I did include, we'd like to extend the water mains to a couple of areas to, to hopefully increase, uh, development and, and to bring development to the city, hopefully generate more revenue. And, and that's what those first few lines are. We also, um, would like to lease three, uh, new vehicles, some F-two-fifty with service beds. Currently, the trucks we have right now are anywhere from ten to twenty years old. And, uh, they're just constantly needing repair, constantly needing, um, maintenance. And even some of the new vehicles we purchased, um, through auctions and things like that, although they're not as old, we, we still find out that when we send them in, they need, you know, we need to, uh, spend four thousand dollars to repair them or get them fixed. Very problematic. So, we're thinking if we lease some, then obviously with the lease would come the maintenance, things like that. And it might just be easier and co- more cost-effective.
We could always use the airport truck. Or a Target.
And then I also included in there the, uh, the backhoe that we just received today, the brand-new backhoe. That's on lease for five years, but I wanted to show that. Also, we need to do some maintenance and updates to our skater system. And once again, just like a small trailer. And then we'd like to get a hydro vacuum, vacuum trailer. Those are various, uh, it's, it's very important, very useful for when we're working near utility lines. You can blow water in or suck it out with a vacuum, as opposed to digging by hand or even digging with a shovel. And on the facility side, we just in- included some projects that, um, we'd like to see done to meet ADA requirements and to, um, um, get things done that obviously need, we feel need to be done. Uh, one of them is the, uh, the city hall lobby. We included that in there, hoping, I think we're bringing that back, uh, next Tuesday.
So, we can get air conditioning?
And then, um, the AV equipment in here for Granicus, that's another one. And then some ADA repairs to the, uh, city hall kitchen, which would include the, uh, lactating room and just making it ADA compliant.
I just saved eleven thousand dollars.
All right.
Well, yeah, that, I think, yeah, and that twenty-five would be the eleven thousand. Yeah, so that, that'd be down to fourteen. And then, um, that takes us to the airport. I just wanted to include these in here, because we have gotten quotes. The airport, the, the roof at the airport leaks. And, um, some of the leaks are from the roof, some of the leaks are from the equipment up there, the vents and stuff like that that are on the roof. So, we've gotten, uh, a few prices. And, um, to replace the new roof at the airport would be fifty, fifty-six thousand dollars. And that's, um, we got a couple of quotes back, we're waiting on a couple more. And there was a disparity between the quotes, so we just went with the highest, just to be safe. We need to call back the contractor, make sure they're including prevailing wage, things like that. And then the new HVAC equipment, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, we got a quote from a local contractor and it was substantially less. So, once again, we just need to verify that they are, that, that number is accurate. And that's what we would do before we brought it to council, with a staff report, if this were approved.
Joe, how many units is that for the HVAC?
There's, uh, I believe five air conditioning units, but there's also exhaust fans. There's, um, uh, uh, there's like, there's a couple exhaust fans. There's also a, a unit that blows air in for the kitchen at Foxley's, to blow her out, to kinda circulate the air. And that's, that's pretty much it, as far as the equipment, AC units, exhaust fans. I think there's a swamp cooler or two, maybe three.
The west end where all the, uh, rooms that we've leased individual, they have no air at all right now, so, and they haven't had for some time.
Well, yeah, and the reason we put these on the list this year is just because we wanted to put it on even for the five-year plan, to think about it. Because we have so many problems with roof leaks and, um, air conditioning units going out. It seems like at least every year, we're calling an HVAC company out there two or three times a year to get stuff fixed. And same thing with roof, the roof is, uh, constantly leaking. And along that note too, um, over at the, uh, the maintenance yard that is used at the Central Park for the golf course stuff, that, that roof in there is leaking too, which has caused the drywall decided to come down and the insulation. So, things like that, they just need to be repaired. We haven't really maintained a lot of those buildings and it's starting to show. And then, other than that, I'll just answer any questions you may have.
Other than that?
I don't wanna ask any questions.
TDS.
The list, the list is. The well.
Let me see, TDS, let me see.
Can you update us on the well at the golf course?
I'm bringing a staff report on Tuesday. We're gonna, I'm gonna, recommending that council approve to, to destroy the well, to pay to have it destroyed. Yes.
Have it destroyed.
Yes, I, it's only, the, the contractor that drew the well, Baker Field Well and Pumping, they own, they're estimating that the most we'll get out of it would be forty-five gallons of water per minute. That would be about one point five percent of what we actually need for the golf course. So, um, I, I don't even think that would pay the electric bill on the pump. Uh, if you think of the difference of what you're gonna save in the water and the electricity for the pump.
What have we paid thus far?
Right now, we're about two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars.
They never made, they never, they never tested. Now, did they break a coupling, was that, uh?
Yeah, they, they, um, they, they were trying different things. At one point, I believe they broke a coupling, they also were shoving chemicals in there, trying to do different things to see if they can increase the flow. And from my understanding of it is, as they draw the water out, it's just the way that the soil is, it takes a long time for that to replenish. So, that's why they're only able to draw forty-five gallons of water.
So, if they broke a coupling at eight hundred feet, did they hit bedrock, do we know? Is that why they broke it or have, well, I, you know, bring us a report on that.
Yeah, I, I'll get details on that for the next meeting. And then, so, I'm looking. I think I, I, um, was this, is this the airport here? So, then, since you brought up the airport, we, we were thinking, I know council was, um, you know, having, wondering what to do with the golf course. We were thinking, we've been brainstorming, talking to some of the employees in the city and some, some golfers. And we were thinking that if we just water the greens and water the fairways a hundred feet from ma- a hundred, hundred fifty feet, a hundred twenty-five feet from the tees to the greens, we could probably cut the water usage by half. And then along those lines too, we were thinking, well, i- is there a way to save the golf course? So, we were thinking maybe if we, if we raise the revenue. The city can, uh, get a license for liquor for, uh, six thousand dollars, which is a lot cheaper than someone, if someone just leaves the restaurant and they try to get it. And there's no guarantee they will get it, whereas the city should get it. Um, we could lease the restaurant with that license and we could pa- re- rent it as part of a package to somebody that wants to lease the restaurant. But the way the restaurant is right now, it's just, it, it's uh, it won't meet any health standards. I spoke into the environmental health Kern County and they just said it needs a lot of repairs. It almost needs like a complete makeover. The asshole system, the hoods, flooring, the cove base, uh walk-in freezer, everything, so. Um, one of the things that we're thinking with the golf course is if council would consider it, is to maybe give staff one year to see if we can raise the revenues and lower the cost. Um, a- and this is what we would ask for to try to accomplish that. And then let's see what, what, what we can get out of it going forward after one year. So it, it'd be like a gamble, or you wanted to take the risk to see if we can get it to a point where it generates hopefully enough revenue where it, where it breaks out even, or maybe just get stuff that adds a little bit.
If you take the number of rounds that were played this year, okay, versus what the city put into it, we are paying each golfer a hundred and sixty-eight dollars to pay a round of golf at our facility, uh, is what it's working out to. Uh, so, you know, we're at a major, major deficit here. And uh, the restaurant, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand right now. Foxy's, their lease agreement is three hundred dollars a month is what they're paying for the restaurant, you know? There's no way we could recoup that kinda money, you know, I'm sure our lease would be much better from here on out, but in the past, we've uh leased all this stuff at the airport and uh for nothing at all and gave them twenty-year leases. And I guess I'm bending on you, cause it's.
That's okay.
You know, that's passed. We need to really start updating, you know, what we're gonna do and make it economically feasible for the city.
Two hundred and fifty thousand for the restaurant?
That's gonna include uh the restaurant, the two bathrooms and the area around the restaurant. The, the idea being that we could do some outdoor seating, that way um, we could try to lease it for a little more and then um, try to increase the revenue.
The idea of s- um, like, what was that company? Um. Sierra, um, they would want, if we were to try to lease it out, they would want those upgrades before they would take it. They're not gonna come in and remodel.
Do all that to take over the golf course, right?
It, it doesn't generate enough revenue to do that.
That's the feedback we've got, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I reached out to the three different management companies and I sent them over the numbers we did have for the golf course and they were like miles apart as far as what they even consider coming in and managing it and trying to turn a profit on it.
Hard to do.
I, I guess uh what, what'll happen before the budget is approved, uh, I, I would imagine we need to uh hear a little bit about what the street department's specifically going to do. Uh, there's monies that haven't been received to fund the, the street department, but I, I guess, you know, I, I have a feeling that we're not gonna see any realistic street projects unless it's a, you know, a, a money financed from, from, from COG or something like that, but we do have maintenance money. And I was, I think that at some point in time, we have to look at that and say, can we realistically provide a service to the, to the community over a number of years in terms of maintenance on the streets that we do have? Whether it be a, a, a good slurry seal program or, or what it turns into. But I think that when we come back to this con- this discussion again, I, I'm, I'm gonna wanna hear some stuff about that. Uh, the same thing applies to, to the water department. Uh, the water rates are supposed to do water line replacements. And the question is, what can they realistically accomplish? You know, can we, can we seriously expect the water department to deliver five miles a year? And what's the cost to us to deliver five miles a year? And it'll be up for us to discuss and, and, and to you presenting to us, if, 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 if we can't make that happen, uh, perhaps the solution is to uh not collect as much water on the water rates, you know, give a break to the community, which, which would then also help a little bit with a golf course problem. So uh, it's gonna be something I'm gonna need to, to, to hear from you. Um, I've not, I, I didn't, I didn't know and I did not know the level of the problems at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, so that's kind of a surprise to me that, that you're looking at as, as serious a build out for there as, as you're, as you're talking about. Um, for us to create a budget for it is gonna take a little bit of effort and it, and especially since you're telling us that this is a partnership thing, where conceivably the prison will be involved and paying a portion of those uh, uh, costs for us. So it's gonna be hard for us to create a budget in, in that kind of vague sense uh for the, for the wastewater treatment plant. But, but I wanna have that conversation, just cause I think we need to just to understand what we're dealing with and, 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 and we're not obviously uh, operators, so we're gonna, we're gonna be completely naive to, to, to what you're telling us. But, but I, I think that uh, our first commitment should be to make sure that as many of our facilities are as possible as are, are capable of delivering what they're supposed to do. So if the roof at the airport is leaking, I think that really kinda has to be a priority that it, that we don't, we don't uh, um, try to rent out a facility that's inadequate and out of, out of compliance. And the same thing applies to air conditioning, uh, as if we're gonna be landlords, that, that, I think we have to, to consider those things seriously and, and, and find every power to do that. But we do also have an issue with the airport where we lose money on it every year, so it's gonna be a balance of, of uh, how much we're losing versus doing the right thing there, so. I, I'm, I'm gonna be hoping you help us to make that decision, cause it, those are tough, tough decisions to get, uh, to, to work our way through.
I had my meeting with air quality control board and as of October, we can apply uh for a fifty, they'll give us fifty-five thousand dollars to repay whatever roads, road we want. Fifty-five thousand's not much, but for dust control, they will give us that amount of money. So we really need to have a project available and ready to go first of October, to show them.
Using a task order or like a project presented, or is there a grant to fill out for it or?
Well, no, it's just uh, we fill out the application for them, but we gotta show them what we want. And he said first of October, uh, we will have fifty-five thousand dollars available to repay whatever we need done. So that's, you know, again, a drop in the bucket, but it's more than what we had, so.
Those are, those are always the best. It's money you didn't count on, that you didn't have to get from a taxpayer. You know, so that, they came from someplace else, that's, that's.
They have a lot of monies available. The budget is just huge this year.
Can we get more?
Yes.
Okay.
For different things, yeah. Uh, so, we need to be looking, you know, into that, or I don't think we have to put it in our budget, but have it available, know that it's available for us.
Yeah, let's see what we can snag.
You know, and then last year, we took forty thousand dollars out of the airport enterprise fund and put in the streets and roads. And we still haven't figured out why that was done, you know, but uh, we saw the transfers, we saw the money being gone and uh, no explanation for it, so that's another reason that the airport's further in the red than uh it should have been, so.
Well, it nee- it does need to be addressed and also the leases need to be addressed. I think how we do things there needs to be restructured.
Absolutely. The, the leases and the cleanup of the airport, you know, we've looked at it and we've had uh, plenty of the people in the city come to us and say, hey, we've got to do something. We're putting all these monies into cannabis and yet the leases we have there, you know, it's a junkyard and we need to straighten it out, you know? If they're not, regardless of the amount of money they're paying, they should at least keep the property up and make it presentable.
Yeah, well, that one, that one kitty litter place, that place is disgusting.
Yeah, and we're still, you know, um, fighting with their attorneys or our attorneys or with their attorneys to try to get it cleaned up. Uh, when I talked to the airport manager, he says we're still in the process of doing that. Uh, but we also have uh, a, a gentleman that's leased uh the whole east end of the airport and has turned it into a salvage yard, you know, and uh, I think we can address it and uh.
And in fairness to them, we've also allowed it or ignored it, so.
Sure.
Just moving forward.
Exactly, it's uh, you know, when the uh, s- salvage yard sold, you know, over by the uh, uh, on Moss Road there, he sold it and took all his old cars and put them out at the airport, you know, and the leasing allowed him to do it, so. I toured it the other day and I think we can do a lot to uh clean that place up and, and that way we would get more money for our leases. And uh, but we've really gotta look at these twenty and forty-year leases, that was.
That was before our time.
Way before our time, but it's time to stop it, you know, so. There's money out there, there's money we can bring in and uh projects we need to do. Uh, I think we have, don't we have like one and a half million uh in uh, the sewer fund uh for that two million dollar project or something, you know?
And it needs to be done. It's, it's been in disrepair for a while.
And uh.
We're on its last leg.
You know, there's not, it's not hopeless. We've got monies there and I think we can.
Use it.
Put it together and uh.
Agree.
Get some of this stuff uh updated, you know? And especially with all the new businesses you've got coming in, you know, we've gotta give these people uh hope and show, you know, we haven't even shown the constituents what you've done as far as new projects coming into the city, so.
They're exciting.
They are, and uh, you know, this'll make a, once we get this budget done, there'll be major differences here.
Anything else, sir? Sir? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody from the public that wished to ask any questions about what we covered tonight? See, oh.
I'm seeing that there's none.
Too bad, you're late.
Oh, no, Catherine, Catherine Effron, California C. Um, sometime back, not this council, um, Norm Hill, who leases at the airport, had some really good ideas for the airport and it was like, he was, I, I don't know how to describe it, like he wasn't there.
He was shunned.
Huh?
He was shunned.
Yeah, it was like, yeah, and, and um, I think we should revisit that.
One of I, one of my ideas is to get all the stakeholders from the airport lease, the leases, the source, sorry.
Lesses.
And um, Norm Hill is on my, my list, uh Andrew Parker is on the list to discuss. They have ideas, they've got invested interest, um, a lot of good ideas, but get them at the table. And I think that's how we kind of started working on ideas for the golf course. We got the golfers involved instead of the city against the golfers or the airport against the city, vice versa. So we're trying to get everybody involved. I'll be calling him, um.
He's got some, he's got some good ideas and he knows a lot of people, so.
So that we're all on the same page this time, yeah.
That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hopefully he's not in Turkey or somewhere selling airplanes. And last time I called, oh, he's in Turkey, you know, he flew one of his uh aircraft over there.
Anybody else? Seeing none? Any last words? If not, look.
Wait, 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 um, Tuesday, the budget is on, on, on the agenda for the meeting.
No.
It's not.
The fifteenth.
Cause I won't be here the fifteenth.
I thought it was the eighteenth.
I'm, I'll be out of town on the fifteenth, the Thursday, the fifteenth.
Way, way to go.
I thought that Andy wasn't gonna be back before the eighteenth.
I thought he, I thought we had one on the.
Yeah.
Cause my understanding it was the eighteenth that he wasn't gonna be back on the fifteenth.
Bring.
Do you guys want us to come back with more details that you asked for?
Yeah, on the.
On the fifteenth, you can phone in.
Or on the, I, I won't, I won't phone in.
Don't want to be here at all.
No, I won't, I won't phone in.
Carry your pigeon?
South America, come on.
Okay, so what we'll do is.
What about Wednesday?
We'll do it, or else.
Huh?
Fourteenth.
No, that doesn't make it any better. I'm gone, I'm gone.
You're, okay.
I'm gone, I'm gone. I leave Wednesday till Saturday.
Okay, the following week then.
Wait, if you would, please.
And we'll have more discussions between now and then.
Okay.
Um, what date?
How about if we discuss that uh council meeting day?
Perfect, okay.
Something good. Tuesday?
I, I, I do think that the next meeting is when, when the public wants to come to the, to the budget hearings. The next budget hearing should be when the public wants to come.
Really needs to be here, so they can.
I mean, I, I, it's nice that you came, but uh, the next one's gonna be the one where we actually start to, to do the, to do, do the brass tacks.
Thank you for your time, by the way. Here are, here are employees.
All right, thank you for everybody sho- uh showing up tonight, looking for a motion, make that motion.
Are we, are, are we adjourning to an, another session or are we gonna just have another meeting altogether?
We can't adjourn because we don't, we don't have a date.
Tuesday.
Okay, all right, all right, okay.
So we're gonna be adjourning for tonight.
Make that motion.
Got a first, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Ten ninety-eight out the gate.